Okay, I want to call the order of the November 13th, 2019 meeting for Board of Education. Mrs. Hudson, please hold on.
Mrs. Booth, here. Mrs. Crabtree, here. Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Mambison?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Booth, would you like to do some quick additions? Yeah. That one first.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, on the agenda tonight, we have Communications of Old School. For sure.
Hi, welcome everybody, can you hear me? Welcome, I'm Danielle Moran, I'm Principal here at Hawthorne, and we're excited to host you tonight, welcome to our school, and also like to introduce our school, Mrs. Tommy Zimmer, this is her first year here at Hawthorne. Tonight, we'd like to start off by sharing just our sincerest appreciation for our board members and honor our board member appreciation. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your vision, your leadership, and your collaboration with our school, and really appreciating all of the students and staff here in our district. We have a video tonight that our students, our LLC director, and our KLS staff put together, they are actually making this video saying thank you in about 14 languages that are represented in our school, so we'll start off with that video.
(speaking Spanish)
Thank you.
(speaking Spanish)
Thank you.
(speaking Spanish)
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 So again, thank you for serving our students and for our work and collaborating with us sincerely. Thank you for all that you do, I think sometimes people forget that board members are actually volunteers, and which I think is just an amazing wonderful thing because it shows that you truly are giving up your time for us and for our students, so thank you. The next thing I wanted to talk about is just to share some information about how we engage our students in our school program and how we connect with our families. So I just put together a brief presentation tonight to give you just kind of an update on one of our social emotional learning goals this year. There we go. Thank you. Our goal this year for social emotional learning is to make sure that all of our students feel like they belong, and that's really rooted in our District 200 SCL component of how students need to feel safe belonging in their school. So this year, many of our activities that we are providing for students and staff really kind of go around some of these major points, but the overall theme is belonging at Hawthorne. One of the things we did to start out this school year was to seek more information and collect data of how our students are connected to our school, and we learned several things through some surveys and some staff activities that we did. One of the most, I think, compelling pieces of data that we learned was how about currently 95% of our students in grades 3 through 5 are actually participating in some type of school activity or club, intrubural, or fine arts program. And actually, when we done a little deeper to see who those 5% of students who are not, we found out that they're either heavily involved in some type of travel sport or some type of commitment outside of the school day that is very time consuming, so we were very pleased to see how the large majority of our students are taking part in many of our activities that we're offering. And we think that's really important because we know that the more our students enjoy school and feel connected to our school, the more they're going to be successful in their academics. Some of these activities that we have at Hawthorne are rugby club, band, orchestra and chorus, drawing club, ecology club, after-school homework club, and our club club, which stands for Children Learning English Bloomancy, which is like a chorus for our second language learners. What's also interesting is this data that we collected doesn't even include some of the tuition-based things like the after-school Young Run Brands or some of the other partnerships we have with smaller companies. So we were really excited to see that students really are taking advantage of our co-Reggie opportunities. The next step that we have planned is to actually survey students and ask them if they feel like they have a trusted adult here. Another important component in making sure that students feel connected is in that communication piece, and we want to make sure we have clear and consistent communication between home and school because it truly is one of the best ways we can connect with our families. So here you'll see that we have several interview slides and have some photos of that we've taken of our students, but we're actually utilizing some online tools and some websites and social media platforms to help tell our story. And these are photos that we actually shared directly with parents in our classroom. We know that many of our parents are working, they're not able to volunteer, they're not able to come on field trips, but by sharing photographs, we're really able to reach that just larger audience of parents, and they truly do feel more connected and they can have conversations with their old kids about, hey, tell me about, you know, this art project you did in school, and get to see a real photo of it. So this has been a really powerful tool for us to provide a communication platform for our parents, and it's also been really helpful for our parents who don't speak English at home. Even if they can't read the text below it, they can see a photo and then they have a conversation with their child about what they did in school that day. So these platforms and these social media sites have been so valuable for us to reach directly out to parents and share some of the great work that's going on. In this picture on the left, this is our, one of our fourth grade teachers, Mr. Ward. In the caption, he is missionary level study, these two are better detectives, Mr. Schermop Holmes. So again, that's such a great way for a parent to say, hey, I saw that photo of you that your teacher sent out, tell me about what you were doing in that activity. And it gives just a meaningful start to some great at-home conversations. The second one was the art project, says we learned about bones today, and why they are crucial part of our bodies, then we create the X-tiles in our hands to show the bones and joints. They use oil to make the paper more translucent so that light can shine through like a real X-ray. And this were done by one of our fifth grade teachers. It's also a great way for us to share information about what students are doing during a field trip, or if they have a guest speaker. So the first and second photos were taken last year on a field trip up in college with our third grade teachers and students, and on the right is a photo taken of a guest speaker we had teaching about Native American artifacts. So again, it's just another opportunity for parents to feel connected, but also get more information about what their kids are doing during this school day. Finally, another thing that we do with our families to connect with them is utilizing our bilingual parent IAS, and when they are at Hawthorne or when they're able to make phone calls for us, we actually have them try to call every family every week if possible, and even if there isn't something specific to call them on, we still think it's important to have those weekly or bi-weekly connections with those families so that they can ask questions, if they see something coming home in a newsletter and they maybe weren't sure about it, that's the opportunity they have to ask a question in a newsletter. So we find that our bilingual parents are also able to really feel connected to our school and feel like they're included. And for us at the elementary level, that's really what our goal is, is making sure everybody feels like they belong and that they know that this is their home. But thank you very much, we appreciate everything you do for us, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Sounds great, very exciting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any modifications to the agenda that board members might request? No, I'll just make a, I don't have a modification, but a quick comment for the board. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of news in the school district this week, but we've actually got a really important business meeting, and I have a lot of things on the agenda that are important. We have not only a couple of high school curriculum standards that we're posting, but we are accepting the audit from last year, adopting the levy for this coming year, and we have some IASB resolutions as well that are going to be very important for next week, so a lot to get through tonight. Next is public comments on agenda items, we have one. So a couple of opening comments before agenda items. Public comments are valuable according to board members, we welcome the opportunity to listen to the concerns and issues that are poured to our community. Be aware that it is board's practice not to directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. You're here to listen. Lack of action or a direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being said. In addition, to preserve confidentiality, the board and its president reserve the right to request that items related to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in future call session if necessary. The board must protect the stability and decorum of the meeting, please be respectful of the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process of your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and address, sorry, your name and address your comments to the board. Please leave your comments in three minutes. Mrs. Crabtree will be timing the comments, I raise her arm if the time limit is approaching. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or comments setting the members of the board or staff. If you feel that a matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's next chance to chat, which is on January 25th. Next here, represent your comments and write them by email to the board. We have one person sign up for public comment on the agenda items, that's Harold Longston.
Good evening, my name is Harold Longston, I do live in the district. I just have one comment to make, it's regarding the public participation at board meetings. When you guys talk about that consent agenda portion of the meeting, can you just explain what the overall minimum minutes are, what does that mean to be you see the maximum? So I just don't understand the concept behind changes board policy regarding the minimum minutes. That's it.
Thank you. Next is our superintendent report, Dr. Shuler, you have the report.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson, I've got a couple of things to share with the board, put something on my report, but I want to start first with sharing with the board and with the community a conversation that I had this morning with PTA Council, and with the PTA Council includes representatives from a number of our schools, and so certainly the topic I'm sure that's in the room is the conversation that we've had over the last week about our council office and that long fellowing. That's not on the agenda tonight with the board to go through kind of the detailed elements and the policy pieces around that, but truth be told right now, that's not my primary concern, the policy elements. What clearly developed as a result of the narrative that surrounded that council office visit was a narrative that was hurtful to members of our community. You saw tonight in what Mrs. Moran shared, that at Hawthorne and around the district, that we place great practices around social emotional learning, around connectedness, and around the importance of making sure that members of not only our community but our students feel safe, feel welcome at school. So regardless of circumstance, when something happens and a narrative exists that makes someone not feel safe, not feel welcome, and I've heard feedback all around that, we take that seriously and we've got to fix, we've got to heal, and we've got to fix. So tonight, tonight I'm going to talk about policy, but I want to share both with the board, certainly to the board, I apologize that a narrative took form out that's been hurtful to our community, members of our community that are here are going to continue to take steps toward healing. That's our immediate focus, as I met with councilors and members, I've had lots and lots of conversations with community members, with students, with anybody, our focus is let's move forward and heal right now and learn from that. So I wanted to start with that tonight, and I know that it's not on the agenda and the detail on it, but again, I express regret in the fact that there existed, certainly in the way that it did any time we fostered a community that I care deeply about, and I know all of the board cares deeply about, we need to learn from that. So wanted to start there, I do want to thank the members of the Board of Education though, you heard the welcome tonight about school board member appreciation, Danielle mentioned that, I want to reiterate it, all seven members of the board, you give incredible volunteer time to the community. I know this time, the work that I do with you, how much time you give and volunteer on behalf of the community, so at this one point in the year, we'll be honored and thank you, I do want to add my thank you for your service. Wanted to mention just three other things very quickly, next Monday night, at Weaton Road South High School, we are second in our parent series this year, Eric, I have that date correct, right?
Weeden North.
Weeden North, thank you. At Weeden North, we have the second seminar around our parent series, Jill Walsh is coming to talk about social media and raising kids and the social media world that's ever complicating things, and so I think that'll be a great presentation, hopefully a great turnout of the second of our parent series. We are meeting tomorrow for the second time with our enrollment committee, so I'd just invite over the board, we work each year with a community-based enrollment committee that spends time studying, looking at our enrollment patterns across schools, kind of future projections, and really the reason that that committee was created by the board a number of years ago was always to make sure that if ever we are in a spot where we would need to consider or talk about some type of either boundary change and/or shift in our feeder patterns, that the board has that heads up in advance. So I mentioned this tonight not to put panic out on the community that we're studying boundaries, we're not studying boundaries right now, but simply to say that we are really looking deeply at that study and future trends so that the board has that information to use in your planning. And then finally, I just want to mention that because of this new order from even our last enrollment boundary meeting, but I just think board want to make sure that you're aware, as you know, we've talked about a couple of the new developments in the southern end of the district that are likely to bring some enrollment on the southern, and I did see an article in the paper again this week, that there is some discussion again down in the one level section of our property that actually sits in Naperville, right behind the Nokia building, there is some discussion now about that area developing again, I think the more recent discussion is about separating the property into a few parcels, the chunk of the property that sits in our district would potentially be zone residential, and that was a real development that could have some impact again in the southern end of the district, but just something that I think we're going to need to monitor, we don't work regularly with the Naperville city and planning folks, we do a lot more obviously with Weeden North and Bill Winfield, Carol Strain, but we're going to have to work with them on that as that continues to happen.
What's that going to be, is that?
We will.
Okay, any other comments from board members? All right, first off, thank you for your comments as well, so we appreciate that. Next on the agenda is the consent, next item is the consent agenda, we have 22 consent agenda items. Number one is acceptance of gift to Lincoln Elementary School, number two is approval of revised policy 2.110 qualifications, term, and duties of board officers. Number three is approval of revised policy 2.140 communications to and from the board. Number four is approval of revised policy 5.180 temporary illness or temporary incapacity. Number five is approval of revised policy 6.40 curriculum development. Number six is approval of revised policy 6.340 student testing and assessment. As I mentioned earlier, number seven, we have approval to post standards for high school course transition to college mathematics. Number eight is approval of post standards for high school course African-American history. And number nine is approval of post standards for high school course media and communications practicum. Number 10 is approval to add serious safety hazard bus route. Number 11 is approval to dispose of surplus assets. Number 12, approval to purchase electronic message center. Number 13 is approval of resolution authorizing transfer of utilities to the city of Weeden. Number 14 is approval of resolution authorizing intervention in property tax assessment appeals. Number 15 is approval of statements of completion for summer 2019 HVAC work at Franklin Middle School and Sandberg Elementary School. Number 16 is approval of change orders for 2019 summer construction projects for roofing. Number 17 is approval of change orders for 2019 summer construction projects for flooring. Number 18 is approval of change orders for the 2019 summer construction projects for tennis court repairs at Weaton Road South High School. Number 19 is approval of the modifications to the board operating principles. Number 20 is approval of bills payable and payroll. Number 21 is approval of minutes for the October 2nd 2019 Committee of the Whole, October 9th 2019 open and closed, October 17th 2019 special meeting open and closed, October 23rd 2019 Committee of the Whole open and closed, November 1st 2019 special meeting open and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to June 2018 as allowable by law. And finally, approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence for administrative certified classified and non-union staff. Are there any items board members would like removed from this consent agenda? Okay, any information from Dr. Shuler?
No, just a huge thank you to a couple of the items on there that are generous donations to the district, obviously the first one to Lincoln Elementary School is, and then I just want to mention that under Gen 12, the approval to purchase the new electronic message center, that was also a collaborative project involving not only some building funding, but also some funding from the TIC clause, which is very much appreciated. And then just a quick reminder on 14, the approval of the resolution authorizing, they mentioned property tax assessment appeals, so the district reviewed this with finance committee, but we only intervene in assessment appeals on large corporation kind of assessment protests, so when somebody is suggesting, and if those assessments get dropped, that has an impact on everybody, certainly within the community, and so we've established some protocols on when the district does intervene in those property tax assessments, and by intervening, it just means we want to make sure that through that intervention process, if the assessed value is going to be dropped, it's going to be dropped to a fair level. That's our level of intervention and involvement, but I think we shared with the board some data that as a result of the practices or the strategies we've put in place, I think that's resulted in a savings of about $300,000 to the district just in the circumstances where we've intervened, so we're happy to continue that work.
Could you provide a little bit of an explanation for number 13, the utility transfer to the city of Weeden?
Yeah, Mr. Farley can do that, it's for the Edison main.
We have a water main loop that goes around the building and supplies, I think what is JR2 or 4 fire plugs that are fire hydrants around the building that were different property and have had issues with them lately, we talked to the city about them taking over ownership of that so they can maintain and provide any type of fixes if there's any future issues or relationships by themselves, and the city was willing to take that over. So from our standpoint, to take some maintenance of those that loop off of our books as well as having to fix any problems that may arise in the future.
Okay. And then the only other comment that I had was on number 19, the board operating principles of the board members, I think in, when we were a couple, a few meetings ago, we had a self-evaluation workshop with the Illinois Association of School Boards, and these are just kind of our own internal best practices, good practices on how we function and communicate, and kind of our own reminders that guide our work as a board of education. We're not required to post those, but from a transparency standpoint, we do elect to put those on our agenda, and they are also shown on our website, the district website, so. Any other questions from board members on consent agenda items?
I just wanted to comment on number three, which is the policy 2.140 communications to and from the board. I just wanted to comment publicly that, you know, so people understand what that is saying, that when they send an email to the board, email address, there will be a document now that documents who it's from, date, general content, not the email itself, but general content, kind of similar to the FOIA report that we have, and so I just think that's important to say to the public that that will be a document that is, people can see now who sent emails to the board and in general what was communicated. And then also, I like this policy, I think it's going to direct people to explain why they do not hear from individual board members when they send an email communication to the board, because I know I've gotten comments like, why am I not hearing from any community? You know, so I think this helps to explain why, you know, individual members cannot respond to those emails. Any other comment that, I'm really very excited about the three new courses that we have, and I love that African-American history course, and Dr. Shuler, I was just wondering if you could share how that course came about?
This is Murphy, I can do it, but I don't know if this is...
Are you sure that she's been working with the building to develop those courses?
Sure, Mr. Claypool organized an African-American advisory group at Weaton Road South, and that group of students actually spoke to the staff on institute day and also expressed that they would like to see more courses that represented their history, and from that point, two social studies teachers developed this course and even involved students in the work.
I think that's fantastic, I mean, it sounds like an amazing course, and I love that it came from student feedback and that we were able to put that together.
Go with the upper at your, Azza. Both buildings have signed off on it, and we'll start at Weaton Road South first.
A question on that, is, have we, that was generated by students, is that a first statement that said?
Students expressed that they would like to see more courses that represented them, and then the social studies teachers took it upon themselves to develop.
Does that happen a lot, I mean, where we have students generating classes, and you know, we have other topics that we may want to consider like that, and then we have to approve them obviously as board members, but can you give a little more background on how that develops?
Yeah, so if you could say, both of the... Yeah, so if you could say, both of the schools, the two high schools, your principals have actually multiple student advisory groups where they're listening regularly to feedback from students. Sometimes that may transform into a class, a suggestion for a new course. Sometimes it may just have to do with policies or practices in the building, but that's really where it comes from. But the actual development of the course comes from a teacher who has then kind of taken that interest and developed a course around it. But then there's a process that that course approval follows where, you know, once a teacher's developed a course proposal, has to be approved by department chairs, building administrators, and then our district curriculum department before it ultimately comes to the board for your approval.
Are there any other programs like that in Wind right at the moment, out of curiosity?
No, there are three of them they're approving tonight. So I think there may be one more that will come forward, you know, for the issue. But, you know, again, they're, we try to be thoughtful as we continue to develop courses because ultimately, while you can continue to expand and put courses in the booklet, at some point, right, the student population's only going to support a certain number of courses, and so we just try to be thoughtful in what comes forward so the course booklet doesn't get overloaded in terms of pieces.
And this enrollment in this class in particular, or ones like it, would be based on students who want to take the class. It's not.
All you're approving is that the course will be offered, it'll be in the course booklet. Student enrollment will dictate how many sections will run.
Okay.
Just a follow-up on that. As we develop courses, are we looking at the option of maybe there's only a few students at one school that wants it, and the other school has enough to be able to do it, to be able to do some kind of e-learning opportunity where we just have more of a supervisory period at the one school, and then it's via telecompensating or something that we looked at that at all? I'm just curious.
Yeah. I don't know if we specifically looked at it on the course, but I think as some of our blended opportunities continue to increase, I think it's a fair question.
Okay, any other comments from board members?
I just have one. On the minutes, when we, particularly the closed sessions, we are destroying recordings and written minutes as well. Is that valid, or is it just the written, I mean, the recordings?
Just the recordings. You maintain the recordings for a certain window of time, and then only the recordings do.
And then, okay, and then is there a written, out of curiosity, of those, and they maintain those for?
You always have written minutes for every meeting that you do. Again, if it's a closed session, those minutes are closed minutes until the board decides in the future to make them publicly available.
Okay, which we do periodically.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Hutchinson.
Mrs. Booten?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. The consent agenda passes as presented. Next, we have the policy posting consent agenda. There are two items. One is the approval to post a revised policy 2.230 public participation at Board of Education meetings and petitions to the board for public review and comment. And number two is approval to post new policy 4.190 targeted school violence prevention program for public review and comment. Any items or items are removed from this consent agenda? Any information, Dr. Shula?
So there are two policies on your posting agenda. Obviously, we just want to give a little brief context on both of them. The first one, 2.230 public participation at Board of Education meetings. There are some changes in that, and again, just by way of reminder, the board belongs to a policy reference service that regularly puts out recommended changes to policy that either come from changes in law or best practice. This is one where they're just suggesting, based on best practice, they can make some modifications. In essence, what it's doing to your public participation comment, our window is saying that the board will allocate up to 30 minutes in a meeting for public participation. I think always you do have an agenda that you need to be able to work through. And in circumstances where that public participation may go beyond 30 minutes based on number of speakers that are signed up to speak, the board does have some options of either extending that window or taking some steps to perhaps adjust some of the time allocations to ensure that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak. So most of this policy is unchanged from the way that it was before, other than that kind of the opening statement indicating that it will allocate up to 30 minutes for public comment. And I did get one question. Jina, you want to mention the one catcher, I guess, suggestion you have on that?
Yeah, the language of policy 2.230 specifically mentions public participation concerning agenda items, and it does not mention a second window of opportunity that we offer public participation regarding, considering, not on the agenda that we typically hold at the end of our meeting. So I wondered if that should, language should be included in the policy to mention that that's a possibility as well?
It would reflect your practice, which I've not heard any suggestion that there's an interest in moving that. I think that's a simple modification that would say, may comment or ask questions of the board regarding agenda or non-agenda items. That would capture your two public comment windows.
So I just want to, in the past, when we have had to go into, say, closed session at night, we have been very careful and called that closed session, if it's a long one, at 11:59. Am I right in saying we've typically done that, not to go into the next school day? Because then that, if I'm remembering correctly, our reasoning behind that is bringing us into another day of a board meeting. So is part of this where we have a long meeting, we have closed session, knowing we need to get through our business work before midnight? Is that right in saying that that might be some of what's behind too?
Yeah, could certainly be, and but again, I think more importantly, the recommendation, certainly out of press, is just that if you're setting that parameter around opportunity for public participation, that you make that known and transparent to the public. So again, I, in six years within the district, I can only count a handful of times where public comment has extended. Beyond that, it typically is not, but I think it's just putting some, kind of putting some guardrails around it. So that you can do your work.
As you mentioned, this is largely driven by press plus, but we also, as a committee, and then some other tweaks, language to it that apply to how we wanted to clarify how we deal with public comment in board meetings. Correct. It's a little bit of press plus, plus, it's a little bit of press plus. In addition, it's some tweaking on our part to get the language where we wanted it based on the way we work. So, and there is, I think, public comment referring to what appeared to be an earlier version of this. We posted, we did catch that over the weekend, and it was an early version of this policy, and this policy that we're posting is actually the updated version, which clarifies some of that language around maximums and minimums.
Just to be clear before we move on, press is, could you explain that a little better, what press is and why we rely on some of that?
Press is a policy reference service. So it is a team of attorneys from around the state that regularly analyzes changes to the Illinois school code, as well as Illinois state law, that will influence policies that, oh, school districts in general, but our school district has. And so they monitor those shifts in school code or in law and bring forward recommended changes to policies to keep your policy manual fully compliant. I just, I think we've shared in every legislative session, there are hundreds of bills passed that impact education specifically, not to count, you know, other areas that may be. And so without some guidance from a policy reference service, it would be very difficult to always ensure that our policy manual is fully compliant with the requirements of the Illinois school code, that we have to use to guide the work that we do. So it is, again, by press, we always adopt recommended press policies, but it is our way to ensure that your policy manual is regularly up to date and is reflective of the Illinois school code.
Are they somehow affiliated with the Illinois Association of School Boards?
The Illinois Association of School Boards sponsors the policy reference service, but the attorneys and the, I guess, the steering committee that are a part of it are typically not members of the association necessarily. They're just school attorneys from around the state that are part of that.
You know, for the last year or so, year or two, we've kind of hit our policies quite significantly and kind of relied on that document. Is that true?
We have.
Okay, thank you.
And if we didn't have, if we weren't a member of the press, we'd be going to our attorney.
Correct.
Significant amount of time at that point. Was there a comment you want to make on number two as well?
Yeah, I'm just going to have Dr. Slaw can make a couple of quick comments on 4.190 as well.
Yeah, just a little bit of context on 4.190, because it is a new policy that's being proposed for posting. Want to start with our, actually with our social emotional learning framework when we looked at this policy. And I want you to think about the emotional wellness training of our framework. And as we developed that framework last year, one of our first steps in correlation with the emotional wellness framework was actually to analyze what we're doing around our procedures and processes for students that are at risk of harming themselves. We put together a team of psychologists, social workers, counselors, nurses, administrators to develop really, really clear procedures and processes and training around our risk of harm to self-procedures, all about making sure that our most at-risk students are emotionally well, right? The next step in that is developing procedures and processes around risk of harm to others. That's a natural next step that's really in correlation with this policy. Many of those members that are on the risk of harm to self-training team serve on the risk of harm to others team as well. But there's a few additions. This is really where Dr. Kyle's role and my role intersect, because there's a foundational social, emotional, and mental health layer behind those procedures and processes, but this is also a comprehensive safety board as well. In addition to those team members that create those additional risk of harm pieces, we're now involving law enforcement, our deans, an extra layer of our assistant principals, our elementary principals. And really, the development of these procedures, the training of these procedures, this is really a process around keeping our schools and students safe, not only potential victims, but potential offenders. And the whole process or whole process of 4.190, when we talk about threat assessment, is evaluating the threat, evaluating the threat to determine if it's transient or substantial so it didn't prevent violence. So I just wanted to give that context. We certainly had all the procedures. We've got trainings going out this month into early December, and that's going to be posted in the ready to go as it comes in play. Questions?
This threat is not, that's one child specific, is it not? Or are we talking about a threat to a building?
Yeah, so anything that could be, that would qualify as a risk of behavior that could harm others. So that could be a self-disclosure of previous or recent harm to others, thoughts to harm others, a disclosure on social media, could be writing maybe to harm others. It could be a state of concern or a significant change in behavior or other warning signs. So could there really be any of those that would qualify all the sudden harm processes to kick in? So, and then multiple layers develop them from there as you start to evaluate the threat, who you bring, who you go in. So this is a really present policy, practices that really fall in line with the work that we had going behind your ICA role in our safety work as well.
How would bullying fall in this? Is that a separate policy or is that part of this?
There could certainly be some intersection there. Great question. There's the intersection there because bullying could also intersect with verbal threats or multiple threats, right? So in one instance, you could be using these procedures to evaluate the significance of the threat, and in the same instance, it could be discipline interaction as well. So there's certainly some crossing there as well.
Any other questions? All right, so just a reminder for us, what we're approving tonight is to post the policies. They would come back after that window opened for public comment for us to approve it the next week, should we choose.
And just a clarification on 2.230 to post a policy as presented with that one change to reflect both agenda and non-agenda items.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented with that one change?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Booten?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the policy posting consent agenda has passed. Next, we are on to action items. We have two action items tonight. The first is acceptance of the 2018-19 audit. Dr. Shula?
Yeah, Mr. Farley is going to introduce. Betsy is going to present to the board your audits now.
Thank you, Dr. Shula. Betsy Alon is here from Miller Cooper. She represents the audit firm that works for the Board of Education, comes in annually to do our audit. They're out probably two or three different times, points during the, towards the end of the fiscal year, and then at once the fiscal year is closed. Just to remind you, our audit is on a review basis, so some of the information, Betsy will go through the names, obviously based on the review of form accounting. She did come out and speak to the Board Finance Committee, review the audit. The board has the audit as part of the board package, and has had some chance to review it, but Betsy's here to walk us through it and answering questions of the board now.
As Bill had said, we did meet with the Finance Committee near the end of October.
Can you give the mic?
Pardon?
Can you just give the mic for the cameras to pick up? Thanks.
So is that better?
Yeah, better.
A little towards you.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay. As I said, we did meet with the Finance Committee, meeting, I think, at the end of October, and did a very detailed review of that information. And I also know Mr. Matheson also tied in the board with a memo that really outlined the financial statements also. So I am just going to hit on some highlights, not to take too much of your time tonight, but please, if you have any questions that I'm going through, don't hesitate to stop me, and I would be happy to answer them. I do want to point out, though, on page one of the report is our independent auditor's report. Again, this year is an unmodified clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give as auditors. Also part of the annual financial report that is filed with the State Board of Education, does a financial profile score each year. This year, again, the district had a 3.8 out of 4, which is their recognition status. Then on page five, is a district management discussion and analysis. This is prepared by the district and renewed by us. I would like to tell board that it's a great document to read if you don't want to read all 100 pages, what's in the audit. It gives a great overview of the year, and has the financial highlights of the district, but also there's a description of the different financial statements that are included within the financial statements that you have. There's condensed financial statements, and there's also some information on factors that could affect the district in the future, mostly financial information. Then starting on page 15 and 16, and 18 and 19, I'm sorry, are your fund financial statements. These are the statements of the funds that you're used to probably seeing on a monthly basis more. I just want to point out a couple things. The district did end the year with an approximately $82 million fund balance that is approximately a $16 million increase. And really, about $9.5 million of that increase is in the capital projects fund from the bond issuance that was done, and not all that money had been spent by the end of June. Overall, though, in your operating funds, there was a 6.1 million dollar increase in the fund balance from the prior year. Then on pages 22 through 74 are our notes to the financial statements. In this area, it provides a more detailed information of what is in the financial statements. There's a lot of detail on your significant accounting policies, excuse me, the long-term liabilities of the district, the capital assets, and many of the pages refer to the pension liabilities and the other post-employment benefit liabilities of the district. The remaining pages of the audit, there's a schedule by each of the individual funds comparing the actual amounts of the budgets to the prior year, and those are by each fund and by all the different functions and objects that are used by the district. And then lastly, starting on page 116, to the end of it, there's some schedules of a lot of historical data. There's historical information on the property taxes, that gives the extensions and the rates and the historical collections. There's also the calculations on the other post-employment, or no, I'm sorry, the operating expense per pupil and tuition charges, and also some detail of the bond and debt payments that are, that would be due, that would be due by the district over the years. Do there are any questions on the financial statements?
Yeah, just, you made a comment about, I think, $9.5 million bond. Is that the refunding bond?
No, no, I said the capital projects fund has an increase at the end of June in its fund balance of $9.5 billion, and the majority of the, why that fund balance increase was due to issuing bonds in order to build your early learning center, correct?
The lease certificates.
Lease certificates, but they had, they had not spent yet, so that's why there was still an increase in the capital projects.
Okay, so lease certificate.
Lease certificates, I'm sorry.
Still debt, still considered debt, but?
Yeah, still considered.
We like the other term.
Yes, lease certificates. And then just real quickly, there's our required communication to the board letter. Just want to point out a few things there. It does state that we did our audit in accordance with accounting principles during the generally set in the United States of America and government auditing standards, which is required by the Illinois State Board of Education. We also did a single audit in accordance with the uniform guidance for the district. Page two of the letter states some of the GASP, which is a governmental accounting standards board, the statements that will be effective for the coming years. Some of them will be applicable to the district, some of them won't, but we like to list them all so the district is aware of any forthcoming statements. The one that will be applicable for next year is the reporting of fiduciary activities, and we will continue to work with the district on this one as more information becomes available from the State Board of Education on this matter. Also, we, of course, had no difficulties in completing the audit. It's always a pleasure to work with Bill and his staff. They're always very efficient to get this information, which leads to the audit being done timely, made and presented to you. There were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements that we had during the audit, and lastly, when the audit was released, management did sign our management representation, further released the documents, and all of it has been filed with the appropriate agencies. So do we have any other questions?
I have one question. On the page 57, the note on pension liabilities. The net pension liability went from $877,000 at 12/31/17 to $12.4 million, 12/31/18, and it looks like it's from the planned fiduciary deposition. Just wondered if, if there was timing or what drove that?
So the one specifically that you're looking at, you're looking at the IMR net pension liability. I believe that one had to do with them, they changed their assumptions and their discount rate. There was also less interest earnings that they, that they had gotten during the year, and then they changed their assumptions with the discount rate is what will cause that liability fluctuating.
Okay, thank you.
I make a couple of comments on that one in particular. Basically, that's out of our hands, that item. That's, you know, that's funded at the IMR F level. We make a contribution for those employees, and then the assumptions, similar to the teachers' retirement system, are all predicated on state funding to match or whatever the case may be. So we really, that whole liability section is really nothing we as a district can control and so on. But a couple of other writings I just want to make comment on. Number one, did we comply with our fund balance policy?
Yes.
Which is the 25% of revenues, I guess, the proper way, operating revenues. Financial status you mentioned is the state rating system.
The financial profile.
Financial profile, and we are in the highest category we could be in, correct?
Yes, you're in a 3.8 out of 4, which is a recognition, and I believe the recognition goes from 3.54 to 4.0.
We've been in that for a number of years as well.
For the number of years that we've done the audit.
So I think it's four or five?
Yeah, four or five years, yes.
And, you know, we talk about the term balanced budget all the time when we do our budgeting, meaning that we project or anticipate revenues to equal, you know, be equal or less than expenditures, or more than, I'm sorry. In reality, we have met that, you know, in the real numbers, we, revenues did exceed expenditures on the operating funds.
Correct. That was that $6.1 million increase that there was to the fund balance in the operating funds.
So that goes into the fund balance, which provides us money for our Sherman Durges funding is kind of how we, you know, that's really outside of your thing, but that's what provides us that excess, if you want to call it, for our capital funding. On page 118, on the, Bill, maybe you can answer this one. This is prior to the last refunding, is it not? So when I look here at the debt schedule on page 118 up on the top left, and it shows like 20 or 40 million in 2024, that's been modified now, right, based on our last funding? And the reason that happened was because that occurred after?
Yeah, there was the, there was another refunding done in July of 19, so that would have been after the year ended, which subsequently went down.
Okay. So that our leveling of all the debt service payments that we did through that latest phase four, I guess we call it?
Phase four.
It was accomplished. It's not a fair saying, okay, good. And when you talk about fiduciary fund, what, fiduciary implies that we hold money for others. What is that in real terms of the school?
The fiduciary funds are the student activity funds that are held at the high school, and the middle schools only have student activity funds here, so that's any money that is held in the middle schools.
And so what is GASP or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board saying about fiduciary funds?
At this point in time, in work that we've done with a small committee of people from some other firms and with Illinois State Board of Education, it's looking at the control of where they need to be reported, and that they're no longer really reported as agency funds, but they are going to be brought into the educational fund. The accounting for them internally will stay the same with the district, it's just some year-end entries that will have to be done to properly report them in the financial statements.
And as we recall, we, over the last couple of years, we've changed our kind of audit procedures, internal audit procedures on those, and kind of cleaned up, not cleaned up, but strengthened the controls, I guess is the best way to say it. So we're well on our way to accomplishing that. Okay, those are kind of the questions I have. Any other finance questions? Okay. One question that came up on tuition, by the way, that Jen asked, and one of the, you know, tuition is reported in two parts within the financial statements. One is in if it's paid to a?
If it's paid to a private, a private source, or then it would be in the instruction part, an instructional function code?
Such as like Clear Woods in Wheaton. We have a student there, those, because they're not a school district or a state agency, the payments we make to them would be reported in the instructional area.
And then if it's a payment to another governmental entity, it would be in the, I guess, the 4,000 function code, which is not part of the instruction, it's its own, it's its own function.
So like Case would be, we use Case, right? Yeah. So, you know, another school district or another co-op, and the total of those expenditures, although they mix between one or the other, is about the same as they were in the past. And they're a big number, you know, that's a big number that we spend, but we talk about it in the finance committee as well.
Just one thing to follow up on, on his question about the pension liability, I mean, I want to get to a big conversation on it. Like Mr. Matheson said, you know, they are numbers that you really can't do a lot about. They will fluctuate every year with the different assumptions, but do remember, it's not money that you owe next year. I mean, it's looking at when people retire, how many retirees you have, you know, the life expectancy, and so that's, you know, your proportion share on some of them and your liability for that, but nothing that's due, you know, next year or five years.
And the state is not indicated in any way, should it be formed, and hopefully we will not hear anything about it in the triple I session coming up, but it's not talking about passing those dollars or those costs to the local districts currently. I've not heard anything.
I haven't heard.
Yeah, I've heard a specific proposal, but I think you always hear some conversation around that as legislative interests.
And that's about a quarter of our expenditures in total if we were to look at it in its gross terms, so it's a big deal if it ever passed that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks to the finance committee, Mr. Hamlin and Mr. Matheson for shuffling us through this process.
Thanks to Mr. Farley for getting it to us earlier. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, that was important to us to have a few extra days to read through that. And just so, real quick, a reminder for the board, we're not approving the audit, we're accepting the audit as presented, or the financial, yeah, the financial audit as prepared. So can I have a motion in the second to accept the 2018-19 financial audit prepared by Miller Cooper and Company Limited as presented?
They'll move.
Move by Mr. Hamlin?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matheson. Mrs. Hutchinson, roll.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bluton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the action item to accept the 2018-19 financial audit is approved. Second action item is the adoption of the 2019 levy. Mr. Farley?
Yeah, Mr. Farley is taking his way up to the podium. He's going to walk the board tonight through the 2019 levy request. Most members of the board have seen this presentation in past years, but Mr. Farley's going to watch it through.
Thank you, Dr. Shuler. It is the time of year where the Board of Education is asked to accept the audit for the levy year. It's levy year 2019. I'm going to run through some information relative to the levy just to remind the board and community of the process and how this works through. Just some levy terms that the board, you know, full here as I present this, tax caps, and there are also called PTEL, which is a property tax exception limitation law, which came into effect in DuPage County in the early 1990s. It is not statewide, not all counties are under the tax cap, but DuPage was the first that did go into the tax cap, under tax caps when it was approved at the state level for counties to sign on your. The consumer price index, I'll talk a little bit more on that some more on the next slide, but that's the index that we use that impacts how much the district receives over the prior year extension. Equalized assessed valuation, that's the property value of the district, and as Dr. Shuler talked a little bit before about how property tax appeals impact, that's all part of that EAB calculation that is used. And finally, the tax rate, which is, as all of us in the community, in your community is known, the tax rate is part of your tax bill and value of your property times that tax rate is the payment that we all owe for our local property taxes. Again, the CPI, just want to talk a little bit about that. CPI is a figure that is put out by Bureau of Labor. In fact, the number just came out today, it is a year-over-year, so it looks at the month of October, so I'll talk a little bit about where we're at now. But if it looks at October versus October of last year, there's an index number, an increase or decrease, I don't know if there's a decrease, but the index changes year-over-year by a percentage based on the index numbers. Right now, the CPI is tracking at about 1.8% over October of last year. It's when we had this conversation regarding the levy, I always caution the board that we never know how that final is going to turn out because we use the December CPI, which we find out in early to mid-January. That is a CPI figure that we're going to use that will impact our 2020 levy. So we'll find that out here relatively soon, in the next few months, but the last few months of the fiscal year, or the calendar year, excuse me, always seems to have an impact. There's always some gyration that happens. So if that index were to stay flat through the, through the rest of the year for the next few months, we'd be at 2.4%. Again, I caution this morning to say that generally, we see that number a little bit down. The calculation that is used by the Bureau of Labor, gasoline seems, I would bring this up, seems to be the biggest driver, the cost and price of gasoline seems to have a big impact on the overall cost of that CPI or with that CPI number, and that obviously is not a main factor of correlation of what our greatest costs are, which are salaries and benefits. So it's not as much a salary and benefit-driven index, but that is our business, but we work off of indexes sometimes more related to the price of gasoline. So it's always interesting to see what happens at the pump in December. This is a 10-year history, the CPI, and as you can see, it's gone up and down over the years. The last five years, we've been above average of 1.5%. Over the last 10 years, it's about 1.7%. CPI is, for the purpose of our extensions, capped at 5% since 1993, when the CPI, or the tax caps went into effect in DuPage County. We've never had a CPI higher than 4.1%, and we, the lowest has been 0.1%, which was prior to 2010. But the CPI has never reached its cap or maximum that we're allowed to levy each year. But you can see the last few years, it's been pretty consistent, and we anticipate again, with the CPI, it's at about 1.8% right now, that will probably be pretty consistent with what we've seen the last three years. Dr. EAB, the equalized assessed valuation, this is the property values of our community in the school district, and you can see, probably this chart is not too unfamiliar for any other community, as the economy and the housing market took a dip after 2008, 2009, the equalized assessed valuation of the property in the school district started to go down. Imagine, we'll talk a little bit more about that, how that impacts tax rates. But we've now come back, and we are actually higher than we were by 2009, and I think Bob Lewis in one of his presentations, when we were talking about the funding of our funds, mentioned that we're one of the few communities he's worked in where you see the EAB actually rebounded to, back to better than where it was when the great recession occurred back in the late 2000s, 2009 period. So our overall property value of wealth in the district has rebounded well. We're made up of three different townships in this school district, so we work with three different township assessors. Milton Township constitutes almost 85% of our school district, 13.6% is Woodfield Township, and a very small amount is in Neighborsville Township, about 1.4%. So you can see in the three townships we work with, Milton's obviously the biggest player there. The township is the one that will be, that does the assessments of the property values in the community, and they're in the middle of what's called a quadrennial reassessment, where they're reassessing all the properties. In fact, Milton is still working to close out this year. They're, I think, have 81,000 properties that they have new assessment on, so it's an onerous task for the assessor. I envy Chris Levan, who does a great job over in Milton Township, because it's a significant amount of properties that he's responsible for. So we're still waiting on some information, and we'll talk a little bit about later about how some of the information we get from the assessors impacts our money request to the board. Our overall EAB description, you can see where we are a vendor community, we've got 78, or almost 79% of our community is rooftops, is homes residential. The next largest is commercial with 7, a little bit under 17%. Industrial makes up just under 4% of the road, and farms a very small portion of our school district. But I think Mr. Paulson had asked a question before, how we rate with other, our benchmark districts in this regard. We, a few of them are, actually have a little bit higher residential, and there's some that have lower residential overall. Some of their range goes up to about 82%, down to 72% of the information I got. I think Mr. Paulson had asked that question last time. So we're probably on the high end of residential compared to our benchmark districts. New construction, and as we go through the levy process, we, again, I talked about how we're limited in our aggregate extension by that CPI factor. The other factor that's out there is new construction, any growth in the school district. This can be anything from, you know, greenfields that are turned into houses or turned into some type of commercial properties, or it can be a tear down of a house, a property that's rebuilt. So new construction is outside of the tax cap, which means as that new property comes onto the tax rolls, it's, the tax rates apply to it separately. So when we go out to levy each year, our requests are always greater than the CPI because we know there's new construction out there that we want to make sure we capture as it comes onto the tax rolls. This number is not known to us at this time. Generally, the assessors can give us a ballpark of what they believe the new construction will be in our, our school district. As I mentioned, Chris is, Levan is working very hard over at Milton to get his books closed, so we don't know that number yet. And generally, it's always an estimate, so we want to make sure we capture this new growth, and we always levy greater than the CPI just to make sure that we capture it. So right now, we're probably, because it's a quadriennial reassessment year, we'll probably have less knowledge of what we're going to see as far as new construction compared to in prior years. And just to mention some of the anomalies that you see on the screen, 2010, as when the CacTARA TIF ended in Warrenville, so we had a large influx of new growth even though the north half of that TIF was in our school district, the southern half, which was all the commercial, was in Neighborsville 203. So we did see a good bump from that, but obviously, a good portion of the commercial property was outside of our district. So we had more of the residential in some of the office buildings, but that was what you see there in 2010. you see there in 2010. Also, we were probably lower, obviously, because of the recession and what was going on with the housing and building markets in the area. So over the next five or six years, it stayed pretty low. In 2016, we had two TIFs that ended, TIF 1 in Newton and Carroll Street in Dominix, or it was Dominix, TIF ended in the same year, so we did see a bump in 2016 of new growth. And in 2017 and 18, we started to see some of the impact of the Amazon distribution center that's at Aurora, a small portion of our school district, but a good one to have when you have an Amazon distribution center built on it. So that is what, some of the impact you see of that distribution center coming online. All that said, we knew all these things were going to occur, so obviously, we love it appropriately to make sure that that happens. This is just a chart that shows the CPI in blue, what was for each year, and then our aggregate extension history. Again, you'll see the gaps between the blue and red are really the impact of new construction. And obviously, you can see the Cantera in 2010, the blue line was what the CPI was, the red line is what we actually received based on that TIF ending. So that delta between the two over the years is just the impact of new growth throughout the levy years. Todd, I mentioned earlier about how the EAB can impact the tax rate, and this chart does a nice job of showing when the EAB is going down, as it did when the recession hit, that starts to impact on the tax rate. It's impacted when the county clerk's office has to impose the tax rate. So as property wealth goes down, the tax rate goes up. That was obviously happening in the years 2010 through 14. Prior to the great recession and since 2015, we see the EAB going up, which is actually then pushes the tax rate down. I'll have the chart here in a second that illustrates that, how it impacted our schools. So here are the tax rates for the different funds of the school district. You can see back in 2014, our overall tax rate was $5.39. Five years later, we're down to $4.88, and that again is an impact of, as that EAB has gone up, the tax rate has pushed down. Our overall levy breakdown, this is for 2018, for last year, 87% of our tax levy was related to operational services, which is our aggregate levy. 13% of it was for debt taxes or payout from principal interest that the county clerk sets for each year based on our principal interest payments. Mr. Matheson mentioned, this is an illustration of the chart of the debt service levy for the next, after phase four. This is again for levy year, the bonds will be retired as we get towards the end of 2025, but because the levy year crosses over different budget years, you can see. So as Mr. Matheson mentioned, we level off here for the next couple of years. In 2019 levy, we'll actually be a couple hundred thousand less for our debt service than it was last year. Stays pretty flat, and we levy next year, and then it steps down in '21, '22 levy years are pretty flat, steps down again in '23, and again in '24, and then in '25, the debt is retiring. So this is what the overall debt service looks like after phase four. Again, during the audit, we talked about they only captured through phase three because of the timing of when we closed, but this chart illustrates where we are after phase four. So how is our aggregate, how is our extension calculated? So our aggregate levy last year for our operating funds, again, this is not including the bond and interest payments, is, it's just under $130 million. Based on the tax cap laws, we would get 1.9% of that, so that's about just over $140.6 million. Every million dollars in new growth that the district sees equates to about $42,000, And then our debt service is about $20,728,843, so that's our debt payment for '19. So this is what our tax levy proposal looks like. Our request for this year, as you can see in the green, is 3.63%, where our levy is $43 million, which is, again, 3.63% higher than $138 million from last year. You can see that the debt service in, or last year was just $29,945. This year is $20,728, which is about a small reduction, and then the overall levy request would be about 3%, but the aggregate levy is the number where we have to be under 5% as far as the truth of taxation is concerned. So what we're asking the board would be to 3.63% levy increase, knowing that we're not going to get that, we're going to get somewhere between 1.9% and that number. That number again is factored in, estimate of new growth in the district plus some pushing just to make sure, because it is an unknown. And again, the levy, some considerations, the levy collection is included in the 1920 budget. We also use, you know, levy, in our levy projections, our five-year model plan to capture the CPI and any new growth that the district has afforded. It also helps in our, as we step up our funding for capital projects moving forward. So again, tonight, we're asking the board to approve aggregate levy request to 3.63%. Again, knowing we won't get that full amount, and we want to answer the questions.
Questions? I have one question. On the, where you have, how it's calculated, we go from, you have the 1.9%, yeah. So that's 140.6, but the request is 143 is the difference, the new construction?
Correct.
And that's an estimate at this point?
That's an estimate. Generally, if I go back, you know, we've probably got enough room for 50 to 60 million of new growth, should that occur. That'd be great. I don't think that's going to be, we're going to be near that. But generally, we've been around, you know, it used to be around 30 million before the recession hit on average, and we've kind of been close to that number the last couple of years.
So if it came in at 30 million, that'd be about 1.3 million? And then, so that means the 143 will actually be lower unless the new construction comes higher, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And we won't find out, I think the question was asked, we don't find out what our actual levy is until like the third week of March.
Yeah.
We hope to find out soon, some estimates from the assessors, but I think we have more than enough in our levy request to capture any new growth.
I see. So the 138 that we have for last year, what was the request for last year? A higher number?
It was pretty close to 3, I think it was 3.7 or something right in that range. It was right around, pretty close to where we're at this year.
All right, thank you.
A couple comments. The CPI we're thinking is going to be 1.8, is that what you said before?
The CPI for this levy is 1.9%. We already know that number. The CPI for next year, that's, for next year's levy, is tracking at 1.8 right now.
Okay, so in reality, the, I guess next year's operating money is going to come from which levy? Half of it comes from this?
Half of it comes from this.
So in reality, we're going to have a 1.9 or 1.8 or whatever, so roughly, we'll call 1.9. And so that is the, just to put it perspective, whether the assessed valuation goes up or down, or the rate goes up or down, the most we can raise is the 1.8%, assuming no new construction in that number, of the total amount of tax dollars we collect, collected in the past. That's what the PTEL is, correct?
Correct.
So no matter what it is, the rating, the EAB only affects individual owners, if you want to call it that, right? Okay. And so in reality, okay, that's how we get there, now the debt service is dropping about 1% according to what I saw up there. Okay, and that's continuing to drop as we move on, and because of our phase four. So that'll, if everything else was equal, and we, the individual tax bill of a, if everything stayed the same as far as assessment and so on, the rate, we could raise 1.8 of new money because of the CPI, but it would be offset by about a percent on, but that is a percent of the?
It's a percent of the bond and interest.
Bond and interest, okay. So that would offset whatever there might be an increase in the tax collection, the 1.8.
Yes, that reduction will impact it, and again, as we start to step down, in now years, that definitely will have an impact on the aggregate levy is for the operational funds, especially when you get out to 2021 and 2023, and as it drops off.
Okay. And then, you know, one other comment that was in the finance, we were talking with the attorney regarding assessments, is that there's an anticipation that assessed valuations in the, in our marketplace will be going up on houses under 500,000 and going down on properties over 500,000. So that could have impact on individuals where it could raise more than 1.8 if they're potentially, if that's a true statement, if they're under 500 assessed valuation, and that, their rate could go up higher than those that are above it and pay less taxes.
Correct.
But all in all, now, the last comment I have, a question, is that what is our contract for next year saying as far as compensation changes?
For?
For the, our teachers' shares?
They have a range, it's a 1 in CPI and with a 4 of 2.5%.
Okay, so 4 of 2.5, okay. So in reality, then, if we have to make up 0.7 potentially, or 0.6, somewhat in the budget in order to fund that contract we have in place?
If you don't take into account any impact of new growth, correct?
Right, yeah, okay. And the new growth is probably not a, well, that would be maybe 1% if it raises a million dollars.
It'd be somewhere about 1%.
Okay.
Are you anticipating that property you talked about for the Woodyard boundaries and taking place, it would be?
It would be a while. I mean, I think just based on where they are, it's going to be a little bit before we see it come on. We'll start to see some immediate impact of a few of Warrenville developments in the next year, but that'll be, I think, a couple years down.
The Amazon is fully, is it its full levy amount now? And we have a three-year sharing?
Two-year, we paid a little more than half for that the first year, and the second year, this is our second year.
Okay. And it's three-year total?
Two.
Two years, so it'll be done?
It'll be done.
Okay.
Any other questions? So there's always a conversation in Springfield about property tax rates, and I would anticipate that we're going to be hearing more and more of that as we get into the next year's election cycle and probable referendum. Really what that is, is freezing that levy amount, correct?
Correct.
Right, so it's not freezing property taxes because it all, also, that also has, the EAB also has an impact on the actual property tax bill, right? So we're really talking about those numbers that potentially could be the frozen amount.
Right, before the tax caps, there was, you were frozen really on your, you had a tax rate I thought you were limited to back, again, this is before '93, and then when tax caps went into place, there was a limitation on your extension based on the CPI. Now they're talking about taking that away and basically making it zero.
So instead of the 1.8 that we now have under the PTEL, the CPI, it would be zero?
Correct.
For the operating portion of the levy, not the debt service?
Debt is already approved.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Could I have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution and certificates for the 2019 tax levy as presented, and then the tax certificate levy be executed, and then all forms filed with the county clerk?
Sure.
Moved by Mr. Matheson, seconded by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Cracktree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the adoption of the 2019 levy has passed. Next, we have two oral reports built around student learning. The first is our student learning feature.
Yeah, so we're going to walk the board through these oral reports pretty quickly tonight, because I know you have one more discussion item in front of you. So the first one actually is just a more quick report that's in your folder, but if this is a quick, any comments on the student learning feature that were made?
Yeah, I just provided the board with an update relative to our partnership with the DuPage ROE and the participation in the grant. Each of our eight schools have received funding through the seed funds to provide additional professional development opportunities. Those are the schools that have participated since 2017, so I outlined for the board the opportunities that are for onsite professional development, local conference registrations, even professional book studies. We have four more schools that have joined the grant, and I've also outlined the funds that we received just in one year to support the efforts around the Wheat Grant.
More questions around that? Again, professional development, professional learning's been a topic of certainly board interest for a number of years. So again, beyond the opportunity, that brings in a little over $100,000 in professional developments for a year by participating member.
Well, we appreciate all the work that staff does to supplement what we just talked about in terms of our operating levy to help continue and extend our school district. So appreciate that. Any other questions on that?
I just had a quick question on the, first of all, about the working with Dr. Howard and Dr. Koom, and it says that you'll redesign the curriculum to include more diverse viewpoints. Like, what is the timeline on that? And then will that go to both high schools, or is that specific to Wheat North?
Well, Wheat North is the only high school that participates in that grant at this point in time, and so they have the funds to support that work. And so that work is actually just beginning right now, and so I don't have a definitive timeline on that completely.
All right, thank you. It's always great to hear about our student learning features. The next one is our social emotional learning feature. Dr. Sloman?
All right, thank you. Again, always for the opportunity to talk a little about social emotional learning. I referenced our framework actually in Policy 4.19, I know I talked about emotional learning, but you'll see our social emotional learning framework to the right there, and if you look closely, you'll see highlighted, this is really going to be just a quick description of how our schools are now applying the concept of school connectedness and relationships to their school practices. So quick refresher, early September, we trained over 150 staff members around school connectedness. Not only did we provide the backbone of why this is so essential, but we spent a lot of time talking about different instructional practices and school-wide practices that you can do to ensure all kids are connected to school. And so as teams then work on some of these processes, they really laid out plans that many times could be multi-use, because some of the practices are pretty in-depth, it takes staff time, it takes staff learning time, right? But I want to highlight Franklin, and just as Mrs. Moran had a degree work at Hawthorne, I want to highlight Franklin because they are a school who immediately got to work and implemented some of the practices that we rolled out within weeks of what we did. So talk about Franklin's journey. So the reason why I'm highlighting this is that this is just one example of the application of the training that we put forth and how it's hopefully having an effect on school connectedness for our kids. So what do Franklin do after the training? There are immediate steps. Their first step was to take on a concept that we call relationship mapping. This is a strategic and reflective process that engages the teachers and the staff in the school, all teachers and staff in the school, to identify academic and personal characteristics for every student. So they literally map every single student out, and then you'll see columns over on the side with each student's name, and then, do I know the student by name or face? Do I know personal characteristics about the student? Do I know about the student's family? Do I know all these two non-academic effects about the student? Do I know their academic standing? So you're really gathering, one, do I, as a teacher and/or staff member, feel that I have an action with the student or not? But that's only the first step because that process only engages the teacher voice, a very, very important first step. But what Franklin do next, again, a feature part of our working relationship training was gathering student voice, right? And our instruction, the tool that we developed for that training, really focused around the question of do you have a trusted adult in school and who is it or why? Franklin developed, I believe, an 80 to 10 minute question student survey, not only asking, do you have a trusted adult, but if so, why? And what did that adult do for you? They also asked questions around, that mirrored the five essentials survey, and around their participation and engagement co-curriculars, what co-curriculars they liked, gained a lot of feedback about students, right? So now, they found a process that they have teacher voice, student voice, they had multiple data sets for every single one of their students in their building. one of their students in their building, really to look through that, are our kids connected? I, I had a great privilege of then being invited in to sit down with their team. They have a social emotional learning team, but before they even got to that structure, they used their professional learning communities in their school to analyze and look at the data to look at, are we missing students? Are there students that aren't as connected as they could be? What can we do for them within our grade level teams? They also have a larger social emotional leadership building team, that's a team that I got to come in and sit on, and here, and to see their teacher leadership and their teachers really taking the lead in recognizing who are the students that our teachers are seeing they're in a connection with, and who are the students that are saying they're in a connection with the teacher, and what can we do immediately? And, one of the students that maybe we need to take a different approach. Bottom line is, they were looking at action steps immediately because they had data right in their hands. I think the most important lesson in this, and this was our whole about the school connectedness training, is that schools not only would develop a plan in the immediate and in the long-term for how they can ensure school connectedness for every student, but that these practices would become sustainable and a part of our school and district culture. And I believe that that's happened, right? This is an example of, right, for deliberate processes that engage teacher voice, student voice, and then really using the leadership structures we have already within our building to analyze data, to plan what we do to connect students and keep that conversation going. So, I know I went to that quickly, but I, I wanted to, there was a lot of talk about our training, I wanted to give one real-life example.
I have two questions. So, first, I love this, I think it's fantastic. Are we going to use Franklin somewhat as a model, or is there autonomy that schools are going to be doing here on the...
Yeah, so we are bringing actually all of those teams back that were part of the fall training in the spring, and a big part of, part of that process we bring them back is for every school to share their process and share their celebration. So Franklin will serve as a model of that, though I can, what I can tell you is I could probably pull ten different examples, processes. Like, Franklin was very immediate and it was all students, but I could go all kind of across the board. What I will tell is the expertise from Franklin will be able to be shared with everybody because those groups now are structures that are replaced and we're going to go back to keep the process going.
So, part two of my question is, are we going to do anything in terms of students connected with other students at a peer level, not the same gap?
Absolutely. So, generally, great question because that's the second part of actually the literature and the research behind school connectedness, especially at the secondary level. It's a key piece, right? It, it will be a part of our school connectedness training, part two, but it was not part one because we wanted to focus on our initial local sub-control. But we have a core team that is also considering that, but our starting point for the peer-to-peer connection will be at the secondary level.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. Okay, a fun one. The discussion items, we have the discussion and kind of some direction we want to provide in terms of the Illinois Associate School Board resolutions. So, or just a reminder for everybody, next weekend is the statewide school conference, the Illinois Associate School Board, school business officials, school administrators, and through the process that comes to us at this time every year, there's a variety of resolutions that will be presented to the delegate assembly. Every school district gets one delegate, one vote, and there's been a recommendations made from the resolutions committee. We have to decide as a board if we would like to vote in support of the recommendation or against the recommendation. What this does, for resolutions that are successful and passing, it provides direction to the lobbying groups within IASB to lobby for legislation on behalf of Illinois schools, school districts. So this year, we have eighteen resolutions, which is a lot compared to what I recall in the past, and there's a variety of, there's twelve that are new resolutions, there's five that are amended existing resolutions, and there's one that's a reaffirmation. So, we got this manual here, was it two months ago, one month ago, and every board member's had a chance to read that. And what I would like to do to try to simplify this process is kind of go around the room, maybe around the table, and just kind of, what's, what do the individual board members feel in terms of, do we support the, the recommendation? Well, let me back up. Are there any recommendations that we want to have a conversation and probably vote in a manner that does not consistent with the recommendation of the delegate committee or the resolutions committee? So let me try to say that again, just to make sure I'm clear. I want to, I want to go around the room and, and find which resolutions that we feel like our individual members are inclined to vote opposite what the recommendation is. So, you know, we have a unity of these things, we don't need to probably go over all of them, but I know there's a couple. There was one that's a carryover from last year that is kind of a statewide lightning rod, and it's back again. So, maybe I'll just start with Susan, we'll just kind of identify which, which numbers we want to have a conversation about. I've noted those, and then we'll kind of talk as group one by one.
So, the ones that I would oppose are number one, number three, number four, and number thirteen.
Okay, Jim?
I don't oppose any of the positions that are recommended.
So, your, your opinion is, all the recommendations, your opinion is support?
Yes, the recommendation of the...
Okay.
Of the committee, I guess.
Okay, Chris?
One, three, and seven.
One, three, and seven. Dave?
One, three, I have some questions, so I want to have some discussion. And thirteen, same thing, I think I support, but just some clarification.
Okay. Jim?
Uh, one as well, I'd like to see conversation on.
One, and Rob, they've all been mentioned. They've all been mentioned, okay. So, so we've got one and three, which are somewhat related to each other. I should probably back up and say, mention them. So, one, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about seven and nine, which are very related to each other, I think. So, we've got one, three, four, seven, nine, and thirteen. Okay. So, well, let's start with the easy ones. Let's, let's start maybe from the bottom. Let's talk about number thirteen, which is the recommendation, it's kind of confusing. So, a year ago, or not a year ago, there was legislation that changed who establishes a prevailing wage act. For board members who've been on the board a while, we every year have to approve prevailing wages, which is the, establishes basically the baseline for laborers, mechanics, contractors, or others that work or, or contract with the district. Through legislation, that was moved to the Illinois Department of Labor. This resolution is trying to change that back to the local control or the local decisions. So, the recommendation would be to adopt that. So, IASB would lobby Springfield to move the control of the, the approval of prevailing wages back to the individual school district. Susan, I know you said you had some concerns about whether we want to, about that recommendation?
Yeah, so from what I researched that, you know, what I found here, just, if I can just read a couple sentences, that the, you know, it's to, to set a uniform rate, pay rate for workers, like you said, in construction projects, and, and I just feel like, I mean, I know that this is an amendment, and so this is already in motion, you know, in a sense, and they're just adding in, you know, a little bit of wording, but the wording is to advocate for any flexibilities that may reduce the costly burden of the prevailing wage act. But by doing that, you take down worker pay. And I just feel like we fight for fair and solid wages for our teachers, and I don't know why we would not do the same for the vendors that we use. And, and so that's why I, you know, and I, I want workers who are paid by their safety skills and their skill, and not necessarily by who is cutting the cost of their workers to get a lower bid in, which could affect the safety and, you know, quality of the work that's done.
Any other comments on that from the board? So, my, my only thoughts on that, this is something that I was really annoyed every year when we had to approve it. This doesn't impact the construction work we do, so as we continue to move forward in implementing our capital improvements, this legislation of the past year that went into effect this year took it out of our hands and placed it in, as I mentioned, in the Illinois Department of Labor, where, which now has full control. So, in my perspective, what the potential ramifications for us are in terms of our, it impacts future construction work, is the potential for project labor agreements, which are often developed for construction projects between unions, unions and the local, construction unions and the local entities. It increases the potential for any kind of dealing in Springfield, which might have an impact on us. So, I like the idea of IASB kind of advocating to provide us some flexibility in terms of the, the burden on construction wages. The, the resolution doesn't reduce wages, I think it just brings it back to something a little bit closer to home that we're probably going to have to be, be approving anyway. I just don't like the idea personally. Some, somebody who works in the construction industry sees that it's, it's all managed at the state level. It just opens it up, in my opinion, to too many shenanigans, which I don't trust that process in Springfield. So, I don't think any lobbying effort's going to change that based on what I know, but, but I like the idea of a little bit of effort by IASB to give us that more flexibility. So that's, that's kind of my opinion, which is in support of the resolution as presented. So, any, any, any other thoughts in terms of that, so?
I generally agree. The, the only thought or comment I had was just a concern around the impact it might have on available resources, in construction and labor. Yeah, you know, if, but, you know, and I was probably thinking of it outside of construction, but, you know, like what we see with AIDS, for example. We, we don't have a good labor pool, and some of it's related to pay, some of it's related to the job market in general.
I think that seems a lot...
Yeah, there's, there's already a labor shortage in the construction trades, so I don't know what impact that would have.
Yeah, it just...
Most of the contractors have bid on our work, our union contractors already. So...
But I, I mean, I generally agree with the sentiment you gave, just, yeah.
So, it sounds like a good discussion. I appreciate your, your input on that, but it sounds like as a board, we would like to support the recommendation as presented. Okay, let me just go down to continue the easy ones.
Do we need to vote on that, or how do we?
Not technically.
It's your perception.
It sounds like there's a consensus.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's...
So, seven and nine are similar. I don't feel super strongly about it, it's just more annoying to me. So, what this does is, there's a couple of school districts that want to move up the timeframe that they could seat newly elected officials from twenty-one days after an election to fourteen days after an election. It's one week. The, the argument of the, for number seven is that they have board members elected that are not competitive elections, so why do they have to wait twenty-one days to get seated? My concern is what happens if you're in a board where you've got some members elected, you know, competitively, and some members not elected competitively? Who do, who do you, how do you decide who you're going to see early and who's going to stick on the board for, for, for the next, for the extra seven days? It seems very awkward to me.
How would you have that missed?
Yeah.
Well...
Says uncontested only.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, so this, this, this district has precincts, and so, what happens if you had two precincts that were, and we're not, they're not the only district, they're regions, that, some of these bigger districts downstate have really big, big geographies, so they're, they're elected by region as opposed to at large, like most of the districts up here. So what happened if you had two elected officials who were non, you know, uncontested and two that were contested? So who do you, you're going to submit to say two, and then how do you, how do you operate the board?
So you're having a hybrid board?
Yeah, so I just think, I just think it's one week. Why do we, my opinion is, why does, why do we want IASB to lobby and spend resources and time away from things that are important in the whole state for one week? That's my opinion. Now, number seven, I'm sorry, number nine is a different situation. I think it's a Peoria school district, which actually seats their board in June, which, which, that's, I can see that as a problem, especially when you're taking important votes and you're, you're, you're going to be coming off the board. They want to move it up to the fourteen days too. I don't know why they can't, I, I kind of have an issue with that, same, same reason. If they want to move it up to the twenty-one days after an election, that seems very, very reasonable to me, I don't know why. So my, my opinion on that one is the same thing. For one week, I would like to rather see number nine adjusted. But, like I said, this is my opinion, I...
I think it's important to remember what the result of this will be, right? It's where will dollars be spent lobbying for positions, right? Right, and I think your point about there are more important issues we'd rather be focused on than these. So if we're going to put a dollar somewhere, I would prefer we put it against an issue we're passionate about and not an issue that we're indifferent about.
Right. So you'd go with the recommendation?
I don't know what the recommendation is.
No, the recommendation is to, to adopt, and my feeling is, we would like to, I would like to vote against it for that reason, for effectively five days, right, because you got a week, it's, you got a weekend. I don't understand why we need to put resources on it.
I, I don't know, but that's true, in the case of nine. You know, that one's six months later, two months later, that, that's a different thing. I, you know, again, these are recommendations to the school board, or to the lobbyists to recommend to the legislature. So, I mean, it doesn't mean it will be adopted or adopted fourteen or twenty-one. I think, I'm looking at these as the substance of the issue, you know, whether it's specific to fourteen, or, you know, to me, I would hope the legislators would think like you do, let's make it all the same. But, you know, this one to me, a nine with the, you know, that delayed until July, it just doesn't make sense.
It's the only district, am I right? You're saying that's the only district, so why is that district not working with their representatives? I mean, to me, that's what should be happening. We shouldn't be spending state lobby dollars on one district.
It may be, and again, maybe important, but this is not going to be applicable, but...
Of course, I agree. But I, I wouldn't oppose it for that reason. I, I mean, there's some reason why this district wants it, and I guess in the best interest of the district, I'd say follow your lead, but...
Follow, follow the recommendation.
Yeah, I would, I really would.
How do you feel about that? I mean, you want to talk about seven?
I'm talking nine.
Okay, so let's talk about nine, which is moving it up. My thought is, I don't, I don't agree, but how does everybody else feel?
I think number nine, I mean, I, I think I agree with Jim that it, it does seem, July one seems far away from an election in that, in that particular instance. I get your point for, for number seven, that if we're just talking a week, like, I don't, you know, that that's going to change anything. But this could, could potentially change something in this district, like, just as they say with that, the three months. But it's interesting because, you know, I feel like number four and then number eight references this too, it's, it's about one district. And so, it's like, why, and I guess I didn't realize that this is only about one district here. I thought this was maybe happening in some other districts. And so, I, I think I do have an issue, I don't understand why there are resolutions that only apply to one district in our entire state.
Right.
And, so, on that basis, if that's really, I, I guess, like I said, I didn't, I didn't understand, I didn't get that that was just about this one particular district. If that's the case, then I would say do not adopt, but if there were multiple districts that were facing this, then I would say do adopt.
In terms of...
Are we sure that it's only this one district?
Uh, I think number nine, it's pure, right?
I mean, the time, energy, the money is all being spent for this one thing where I feel like that district could be working with people that represent them at the state level. That's where, they're the ones who are going to make the difference, so.
And we pay dues for our school board to join IASB, we're paying for their lobbying efforts, and that's kind of where, where I feel, to your point, is like it's one little district, just work through the legislative process to pass legislation for your district. It happens all the time.
I'm confused on the wording on, let's take seven, for instance, right, you know, right above the recommendation to adopt, it says the resolutions committee suggested that the resolution be revised to make it clearer and comply with other laws, which is the twenty-one day, in my opinion, you know, in, you know, the submitting district decree. So I guess, to me, that's going to be modified, you know, that's my understanding, but it's, you know...
Very confusing.
Yeah, I know, and therefore, I, I just, I think that's the substance of why you're rejecting the seven. I just, you know, I agree with the recommendation based on those words above it, you know, that's...
But what's something like with, with what Brad said, if it's a school district that is represented by regions, you have... is represented by regions, you have, and you're swearing in at different, at different times, that doesn't make, doesn't make sense. You're going to swear in two people who are uncontested because in their district of that portion of the district, they weren't contested, but another seat was, so are you going to do one at 14 days and one at 21 days?
I guess the question...
Is it going to certify a election?
You're making the assumption that there, that's not considered uncontested. You know, and the definition of uncontested could be any seat in, you know, in the district. But, you know, again, we're, we're trying to set up an example here of a topic that, you know, may or may not exist. I just think the practicality of this is, you know, why delay? You know, there's many districts where people don't run, and they try to get people to run, and, you know, why have a, you know, a short-term vacancy or whatever case may be? You know, why not put them on? That'd be my reaction.
We're talking one week. We, if we were talking, yeah, it's one week for the law school district.
Any thoughts over there?
I'll go back to my point of rather than not spend the dollar lobbying at this point. So, I guess I would say I, I, I'm against the recommendation.
Four, seven, and nine.
Correct, I'm looking at seven. Oh, that's right, I was switching.
You know, I was looking at the substance of them, thinking, I don't have a strong opinion on it either way, and, you know, if they've all discussed it and that's what they want to do, I appreciate your thoughts on how we're spending lobbying dollars, which I hadn't thought of as I was reading the content of these. I also think nine is written fairly sloppy because I thought it was, the language was confusing. So, I'll go one other direction.
I tend to agree exactly with you. I, you know, it's, it's not going to affect us, let's basically, so, you know...
Don't spend time and resources.
I guess if we, now we're kind of making another leap. We're kind of expending time and resources. You know, I don't know that I have any control of that, I, you know, whatever, I do think.
Well, I think our control is how we vote, and it depends on how everybody else votes. I mean, that, that's, this is as close as we get as a school board to affecting law, you know, and so, you know, I think...
Well, it's lobbying.
Well, I know that's right, it's lobbying, but it's still, it's the closest we get to affecting some sort of...
All right, but again, we're basing on economics, spending lobby money, that, that to me is a different opinion. I just, you know, these districts are having some kind of problem that created this thing, and, you know, I don't see why we should object to that, but...
Well, I have another question. So, if we decide to oppose recommendations on a lot of these, does this mean we're picking a delegate here from amongst us who's prepared to go to the, the conference and stand up there and explain why?
At the, at the end of this, well, once we have kind of our positions as board, as a board, how we want to vote, we will have to select a delegate to go to the Delegate Assembly on Saturday morning next week to cast the vote on behalf of our school district. You've done before.
So, I've done that since I can talk about it, because I've done it. So, so, interestingly, you're in a, so you're in a room with a delegate from every single place. In some cases, where it's a more controversial topic, there will be people who will line up at the microphone and be able to give their thoughts. You get a paddle, you raise your hand, you take a vote in that respect, but there are some things that get maybe a couple of people talking, and then there are some things that maybe get a lot of people talking. I'm trying to figure out how they're going to do all of this voting in one session, so whoever is going to be our delegate is going to need to probably be there for quite a while.
Well, so, how I would pose my question would be, do we want to collectively spend our resources putting a delegate in there, delegate in there to be one of those people at the mic to be pushing something other than what's here? Or are there other resolutions within here that we feel more passionately about that we would want to spend?
I would, I would not recommend, yeah, I would not recommend putting someone at the mic or...
Well, that's why I'm saying it's a bigger question.
Yes.
So, that might affect how I would tell you what to do on some of these.
You can go vote, you don't have to, you don't need to vote.
I understand that, but I'm saying, do I own consensus? I already know there's only one that I feel passionately about that would want our group to have something to say about. These don't really matter to me that much, so...
Okay.
That affects how I'm telling you what I think you should do on seven and nine.
But we, we, so, the delegate can vote no without saying why, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it is not, you don't have to spend any time explaining everything.
So, on seven, I'm guessing that the school board that proposed it doesn't have this district, you know, thing, because...
No, they, they do have, they're, they're voted by precincts.
So, they could have the situ, because I didn't consider that, and to me, it was a no-brainer, if it's uncontested, just swear them in. But then, what do you do if, you know, you ran contested and I ran uncontested, I guess, so that, so I think for that reason, I wouldn't support that. One, nine is pretty ambiguous because they're, they're putting wording, because it's really two issues, right? It's the five-year term and the 14-day term.
Well, it's like 17 days or something.
They're talking about going from five, from a five-year term to a four-year term, and the swearing in in 14 days, and it gets a, a little confusing. I like what Rob said, I'd rather not, I don't even spend any time arguing this for Peoria. Let Peoria fix Peoria.
It's a local, if there's going to be time and effort spent, it should be local.
So, I guess kind of what I'm hearing of us is that we want to vote in opposition of the recommendations, so we would vote to not adopt seven and nine.
I'm good with that.
I guess my reaction to it is that I don't care, why not let the committee make the decision? I, you know, let the majority rule, whatever.
Okay. Just kind of continuing up the list, we're going to end at number one. Number four, school district police force, also a district we just mentioned.
Yeah. So, we just, this was one of my big things, and we've talked about it. This is one district. This is a case where it is one district, and they state in here, it, you know, it won't apply to anybody else, but you're going to open the floodgates here if you do this. You're opening the door, and I really feel, because ISB is supporting one and three, and number four sort of is in that ballpark, that we're like, sure, you go create your own police force. So, you know, in resolution number eight, the, the, ISB specifically says, looks to suggest do not adopt, because they're trying to address a statewide solution to a local problem, trying to address a statewide solution to a local problem did not seem prudent. That's exactly what's happening here. You're talking about one district, and, you know, and I, I searched for a couple of news articles about this and stuff, and it, you know, it has to do with this police force that was there. They, they kind of lost their job.
Yeah, so this is, just clarify, this is a school district that had their own police force in the past, that wants legislation to be able to reinstitute it.
Right, because legislation was passed in 2014, I believe it was, that said you can't do that anymore. And I have no idea why ISB would want to, I do not want to see legislated dollars, or, I'm sorry, lobbying dollars put towards, why in the world do we want to say the school districts are now going to be in charge of their own police force? Do you want to be talking about that? I, because I kind of don't.
No.
So, we're going to follow, we're going to follow the recommendation?
No.
Rob says do not adopt, wasn't he?
No, not, no, number four.
I see a lot of shit.
I support the decision.
So, it sounds like...
Well, I, the sentence that grabs me is the submitting district is asking for ISB's assistance in attempting to address a local safety issue.
Right.
Right.
So, why can't they just figure out their own way to address it? That's the resources.
So, we're implying, yeah, we're implying we don't want to support these because it's spending lobbying dollars that we don't think should be spent on that category, and I, I can support that concept, and I, I think that's the best way to handle it. So, I guess that's a no.
Right, so, it sounds like for number four, we're going to, we're going to vote in opposition of the recommendation to, to not adopt. Okay? Appreciate that conversation. Thank you, Susan, for bringing that. Okay, one and three, so, is there a chance you can give us a kind of a interesting perspective on these two? Let me just, I guess, before...
Me, too?
Well, could we just start either with one? Is there anybody in agreement with one?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think well...
So, number one is back from last year.
And is there, I couldn't understand what was different about it.
It's not the same one, and still, we'll say, so, in fairness, to fairly represent the conversation, it's presented from a perspective of local control, but I think as we talked about this last year, I get that there are different variables around the state, but bottom line, I, I just don't think this is a good solution, and given that, not only students, but parents, community members from our community are traveling to other school districts for our events, there's no way that you're going to completely keep this contained within the district. So, local control cannot be local control, right? It is a state.
What was last year's vote on this at the, at the assembly?
It was relatively close.
So, I guess I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of the other districts. Basically, they, they have a bigger problem or a different problem we have because they're widespread areas and so on, and, you know, and is this a concern of the event that may happen? Obviously, it is. You know, I, I just, I guess my reaction to this is there's a, you know, particularly in this, this ain't, this is not a one district issue. This is a big issue. And, you know, I guess the, you know, the economics, why did the school districts raise the minimum salary to 40,000? Because districts weren't paying that, they couldn't afford it. Okay, so now they're burdened with that minimum of 40,000. So, they, they're not going to be able to hire, you know, what's the proper term, SROs? You know, I mean, you know, I guess the concern, I guess my fundamental concern is the safety, and if there's, half the districts in the state are that widespread, and there's also always going a effort to consolidate, you know, districts so they get more widespread, so, you know, to me, those are local decisions that is being requested here. You know, it's not like we have to adopt it, it's not like we have to, I, I think that, you know, we're, it's hard to put ourselves in those shoes, and I, and I, I think, again, there's been enough, this is the second time around, and it's a, it's a very strong support group, and I, I just think that local concern is something that, you know, in one of these two, but, you know, I guess the second one, you know, requires funding, which is, you know, maybe the answer better, but, you know, and that's more of a trained staff versus a, you know, a teaching staff that got trained, and, you know, I just think, you know, in today's world, I don't know anymore. You know, I, I never thought we'd have issues that we have in educational places that are becoming more and more apparent. So, I, I have really no problem with this on a local control basis. I, you know, again, I don't know if it's one and three that I would prefer, but, you know, I, I just think it's hard to put ourselves in those shoes.
But Jim, if we give local control, then it's local control everywhere, and that means that our students, our staff, our community members that go to another school district that may choose to do this could be put at risk, and that's where I can't, I can't get behind it.
And I thought about that, too, and I thought, you know, let's say we have a football game at XYZ place.
Yeah.
Okay, and that place is concerned enough to hire local enforcement, I'll call it. I'm not sure that I don't want them there.
That's different. That is completely different.
Okay, then I'm missing, I'm staying where you're saying.
Local, so, so if we, if that school district wants to have police officers there, that's a, that's a completely different story than what this is saying.
You're talking about number one.
Even number three, number three is may include. Am I right in saying that it's a may? So, what, another district, when you put it at local control, we are saying that that other district has discretion. I am all for there being some grants being supplied to put law enforcement there. I am not where a district can choose whom that person is that's carrying the gun. That's where, that's where I, that's where I have a problem, when our students, our staff, and our community could be put in those districts.
So, you'd rather have our, you know, let's call it a football game, have our community call up?
We have police officers.
No, no, we're going to go to XYZ school district in middle of state, and they have a threat there, a threat that they feel strong enough to look at hiring police officers on, or, or staff.
Police officer.
Or staff, let you, just walk through the process for me. And we show up there to play that game, and there, they feel enough at risk that they need to hire your people out there.
Well, if they feel enough at risk that there is, I would sure hope they'd be saying something to us. I mean, and they're not going to put their own people out there. I, I worry about, you know, I mean, we can go and start talking about accuracy of law enforcement within situations, and we're going to put people out there that, that a, a school district or community has that opportunity to say what they think is acceptable of a person's training to be having and carrying a gun. I, I, I struggle with that.
So, let's, let's separate one and three.
Please.
So, one is about giving local control to enabling teachers to be armed.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I think we're all on board, maybe except for Jim. We want to vote against it. The recommendation is to say yes, to adopt it, so that ISB, ISB lobbies to change legislation to provide local control to army teachers.
We're going to say no.
Say that right?
Right. And that's opposing the resolution.
So, our vote no would be to oppose the resolution.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Which I would, I would say, I would support.
So, that's the same thing we did last year. Correct. Second, well, number three is a little bit different. It's not about army teachers. It's about funding lobbying for a grant program that enables school districts to hire school resource officers to provide that level of security. Personally, I'm supportive of that. I think that's what we lobbied for last year. I think there's legislation that dictates, there is legislation in effect this year that dictates what training of school resources, office, school resource officers have to go through every four years. To me, that's a little bit different. We have police officers in our schools, right?
But, but that's trained police officers.
Well, but, but this, this legislation, in effect now in Illinois, requires school resource officers to have that same training every four years, 40 hours of training every four years.
So, is 40 hours of training what an actual police officer goes through, or they've been trained? Like, we have actual police officers in our district. I'm comfortable with that. What is this proposing? I mean, if this language would just be altered ever so slightly, I couldn't get behind it. I'm all for the grants.
Well, the one, so you just said that, is that current legislation that...
Current legislation that went into effect this year requires that school resource, school resource officers take at least 40 hours of training every four years that includes crisis intervention training and trauma-informed care for youth.
So, if we currently hire someone, they have to comply?
Because what, where I've got confused on this is it says, and you're reading something else?
Yeah, this is just some research I did.
Because it says school security personnel may carry a firearm in a school if they continue receiving the same ongoing firearm training as active police officers, but it doesn't reference that training to begin with, so it says, so, but you're saying they would, that, that training is there?
Because it, it refers to school resource officers?
Yep.
And there's new legislation that dictates the, that establishes what the training is.
There is a definition, though, for school security. It says school security personnel may include off any law enforcement or law enforcement officers who retired within the previous five years, so they would all be trained police officers.
But it says may.
Sure, it says may, that's why I, it's the may that has me concerned. If that, that one piece of language could be amended, I could be behind this.
Can I just, I thought the point of this was that, that they, that districts, it would be open so that they didn't just have to have a relationship with their local police department, but that they could hire people who have been trained police professionals who happen to be off-duty, so moonlighting, I guess, or recently retired, so with the implication to me that their training is up to date.
So, is there a way we can get just some for sure clarification there? Because if it says that they've retired within the previous five years, how is that then keeping within this four years? I mean, I just, I just want to know, can we get some clarification on that?
I don't think we can.
So, I, I agree, Chris. I think the word may is too vague.
It's too vague.
And it's too open. If it's limiting to the criteria, then I'm with you 100%.
percent. I could get behind it. But I think, I believe it's too vague.
Can I just say too, the big issue, I mean, I get that. I, I agree with that. My big issue with this is that there's, right now, we have police officers at our high schools. And that, that's it. This does not state what type of school this person can be at. Can you imagine having an officer, an armed officer at the door of Jefferson? Because that's what they say.
That's not.
No, that's what this, this doesn't say. It doesn't. It doesn't say.
Well, you could.
And then I'm going to tell you, I go to schools all the time, in elementary schools and some other districts, and there are armed police officers in those elementary schools.
So that turns our schools into prisons. I'm sorry, but I just, I can't, I, I can't get behind it. If this, if this maybe said high school, I would be a little more tolerant of it, maybe. But I, that's my big issue of this, is it does not say what type of school. And I just, I, I just, I cannot believe that, when we're talking about what dollars that ISB is putting toward lobbying, that this is what we're talking about. This is not the problem. You know, that this, the problem is if we're going to put lobbying dollars towards something, we need to put that towards our federal representatives and our senators to lobby to change our federal laws. That's how we're going to address gun violence in this country. It is not putting armed guards in our elementary schools. More guns in our schools do not make our schools more safe. When somebody comes in, I, this was an article from Washington Post, and I, this gives the example of somebody walked in, this is in Kentucky, a fifteen-year-old had a semi-automatic pistol and ten seconds killed, ten seconds killed two people and wounded fourteen. If that SRO, that means that SRO has to be in that exact spot at that exact moment. That, I don't, you could have, an armed officer would not stop that. And so I understand what the downstate, you know, that they're having, not having the resources to put a police officer in there. Chris, I agree with you there that we're targeting a police officer. But I just, we are addressing this from totally the wrong end. And I, I just personally, I, I, I can't get behind something like that.
Respectfully, that's not the point on table, though, right? The point on the table is what do we want to do about I A S B's position? I'm not, I'm not discounting your point of view. I'm just saying that's not the point we're talking about.
Well, I, I, can I ask a question? My sense is that there are two pieces to this. One is talking about the establishing grants, which speaks to what Jim was saying about some school districts not being able to afford school resource officers. So that's, my first reading of this, since that's in the title, was that grants could be set up to help equalize that. And then embedded in this, there's the talk of allowing people to hire off-duty or recently retired officers, which makes it sound like that's something new that people are not allowed to do now. So it's a little bit murky.
But it's the funding of those off-duty or recently retired police officers.
They can't afford it now, right now. They can't afford it. Therefore, they don't have it. And if they had funding, then they could. That's the concept.
But I think Chris, Chris's point's the point, which is if we could limit it to, if it's limited to people who are qualified professionals and want the training, we can, we, okay, we can have a good conversation. But given the language, it doesn't seem that it's limited to just retired or off-duty. It seems like it could be broader to people who are hired or qualified based on other criteria.
This isn't even a downstate district. This is Wheeling. Right?
But there was a very close vote last time on this topic. So I mean, it's a statewide issue. It's very particular on where, where the position is. And I don't know the circumstances on Wheeling enough to say what their problem is, but you know.
Okay, so.
Take a look.
Okay, so let's go around and help me and do that.
What are we doing? One of three?
Consensus. See if people stand and see if you've got a straw.
All right. Your support. Support the safety grant program or not?
That's three.
Three. I'm just going to make sure I got my wording right.
The recommendation is to adopt. Do we want to say?
I'd say don't.
Don't? Jenna?
I guess I'd say don't. I, I didn't have questions, Chris.
Dave?
Don't.
Okay.
Me? Don't.
All right. So there you go. We don't need to take that list. I would support it. Chris, Susan would be against it. So our position as a board to, to be to vote against this resolution. Okay?
That was three.
That was three.
One.
So one, three, seven, nine.
We concluded, we voted on one already too.
We're going to vote opposite. Okay. That's it?
One, we already voted.
Yes. Well, we were all.
More of us.
So four of them, we're going to vote in opposition. And I'll provide a little summary sheet. Next thing we have to do is pick who wants to go do that. Any volunteers?
I cannot do that.
I can't. Chris can't.
Neither one of them.
Susan is very anxious. I want to raise my hand just to have a vote. No, I'm just kidding.
No, that thing, it's great.
Okay. So we appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just don't say anything in the mic, okay? Or don't identify yourself. Let's say that.
So we'll provide the direction for you to vote on behalf of our district. That's next, next Saturday morning. Right? Next Saturday morning?
Yeah, then Thursday.
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you for that.
It's just a real quick, I mean, I think we're really watching, but the public can't find these documents online. They're on the I A S B.
The resolutions are attached, Rob.
Oh, they're attached in the site? Okay.
Okay. Read the reports. We have four reports. We have the monthly financial reports, the Freedom of Information Act report. We have a construction update on the new Jefferson Early Learning Center. We have the Citizens Advisory Committee report. Now, that's new. That's their minutes from the last meeting. Those are all.
The one before the last.
Right, correct. The one before the last meeting. So those are just there for our information. So any, any board members have questions on those items? Okay. We have a couple of reports from board members listed. I don't remember what's on the finance committee meeting minutes. Anything there?
Yeah, I thought we had talked a little bit in that meeting. I didn't see in the minutes about kind of reviewing the procedures on some of the, what called repair and remaintenance associations as well as, as those that meet state bidding criteria. And I think it's something that we're going to deal with in the future, but it wasn't on that, that, those minutes. So I'd like to get those updated to include that.
Can you maybe email those comments to Jeff?
I think if you review the, the wording in the, in our conversation on the tape, we haven't destroyed that tape yet.
Those aren't, those are.
Oh, we don't have a tape? Yeah, sure. But I'll do that a little bit.
Okay. Any other comments on the committee reports? Any other reports from board members?
Sure. Jim and Susan and I attended the Warrenville City Council Lady Proclamation for School Board Member Appreciation Month. And then Susan, Diana, and I went last week to a very unique opportunity that's out there that the Transition Program is doing. It's now a monthly activity where you can go and make a craft with some of the students that are there, and they lead it. And it was, it was fun. They're selling their products. It was really great. Erica did a nice Facebook Live from there and seeing some of the excitement in, in the students. And it just showcases the talents that are, that are at our transition center. So I just want to make sure I put that out there. I did see that they have a December, I think it's the second Tuesday of December, that they have another night where you can make the glass objects. So.
We, under the board report, we, Dave and I and Brad went to the Wheaton City Council. And, you know, they read the proclamation of, of, for the board members. That was Board Member Week, I guess, if I'm right. But recognition. But you know, I, I, you know, maybe I don't always listen well, but I listened really closely to it this year. And it was really, you know, I don't want to read it right now, but I thought it was really a well-written thing. And it made me proud to be serving on the school board. I really did. So it's a good item.
Thank you. Any other reports from board members?
Yeah. I had the ability to go to an interesting event last Friday. I went to the Warrenville Youth and Family Services Annual Dinner, along with a group from Hubble. Hubble's one of my adopted schools this year. And that is a fabulous organization. That's a great example of the community partnership that we have, that I thought you should be aware of. Wheaton Youth and Family Services has a bunch of programs for, sorry, Warrenville Youth and Family Services, for Warrenville residents that are supposed to help vulnerable residents in different areas, whether it's social or financial, or in this case, educational. And in our case, we have a very robust program with Hubble. And they have their Quest Program. Meet at a church that's not far from Hubble every day after school. We have about twenty-four kids from Hubble that attend it and another half dozen from Johnson. It's a fifth through eighth grade program. And the kids can go every day. They may or may not go all five days. But they have athletics, social, homework time, mentoring. They take them on field trips. And it's a great way to support some kids who need some extra support. And so the dinner was attended by some social workers and one of the counselors and the assistant principal from Hubble. And there's a very good working relationship I had learned from talking to all of those people between the Warrenville Youth and Family Services staff that everybody spoke about.
All right. Anybody else? I'll just want to acknowledge, I did get a chance to go last Friday, but the Student Excellence Foundation had our STEM Expo. I think the president of the foundation is back there. I heard it was a very great turnout. Lots of parents and students there engaging in fun STEM-related activities. So thank you to the foundation for helping put that together.
We have a quick item. The, this ceremony at Reed and Warrenville South, Reed and Warrenville South is playing rolling medals in the third round of the state football championship. So anyway, I think it's one o'clock. It's looking to kick off. Is anyone that is interested?
Okay.
And the Marlon Ball team, that's a, goes Marlon Ball team with this in the state finals as well.
Okay. Topics for future discussion. We have just three quick notes here. One is kind of another board member request and.
I'm sorry. Can I just throw in one more? I don't know if this is appropriate time. But Rob was not at our fall I A S B dinner, and you were awarded, and awarded for training, professional development that you've done, Level One. There you go. I picked up your award.
Well, thank you.
As would you. Put it on the wall.
Okay. So topics for future discussion, a couple of things here. First is a kind of a new item, another board member request. And so this is a request that I want to make kind of in relation to the, the conversation with the community over the last week in terms of the author visit. And so we have a couple of policies that shaped our decision around that. So six point two six L complaints about curriculum, construction materials and programs, as well as six point O teaching about controversial issues. What I would like to do is request the HR Policy Committee to redo those policies, to see if there's any refinements or revisions or clarifications that may be needed to make sure we have a very firm direction going forward on those kind of, and similar related events. So our policy dictates that that goes back to the HR Policy Committee. What I'd like to see if that committee can meet sometime and bring back some discussion at our December meeting so that we can determine if a board, if any changes are warranted and move forward with the process of updating that policy. So if we do go through that, most likely, what I'm imagining is a December conversation. If we decide revisions are needed, that would be posted in January with, the earliest we would go and need for approval would be in the February board meeting. So that's just kind of a request of mine. I know that's not the solution, but that is something that we can do as a board to, to take the next steps. Also for topics for future discussions, five-year financial projections, as well as the master technology plan. The next regular board meeting is December eleventh, twenty nineteen, at seven o'clock at Lincoln Elementary School. We do have several comments of not in, public comments for non-agenda items. And given the length of that and the conversation in the community the last week, I, you know, I want to make a prepared statement kind of on behalf of the Board of Education, individually, board members have kind of weighed in on this. And, and I think this is important to sharing, where Dr. Schuler shared some comments earlier. But we've had many points of view and diverse opinions shared with us by our community as it relates to the cancellation of the author's visit to Longfellow Elementary School. This is our first meeting as a board since October twenty-third, maybe the whole. And the agenda we just worked through tonight had several items, which you all heard, are very much calendar-driven topics. I just mentioned, just, just previously, that I'd like to identify some initial steps that we can take regarding the board policies that guided our administration's actions and decisions that, as I just said, if refinements or revisions are warranted, we'll bring those back to the board for review. As I look forward from tonight, I anticipate that we might have a deeper discussion on this topic at our next board meeting, which I just, as I just mentioned, is December eleventh at Lincoln Elementary School. You know, I want to assure our community that we take your concerns very seriously, and will do our best to move forward in a positive way. As we always have, we take, we will place student learning experiences and interest first, while also considering the values of our parents and community, and will always do so in a manner that is consistent with the law. We will strive to use this difficult situation to make our schools, our district, and our communities even stronger. So with that said, we do have several people sign up for public comment. I won't go through the comments that I read earlier, and I'll just kind of go in order as they signed up. Just a reminder, we have three minutes.
I'll raise my hand.
This is Crabtree. He'll raise his hand when we, we're getting posted in three minutes. So first in the list is Linda Pilly.
I am Linda Pilly, resident of the district of Warrenville. My two children were educated in District Two Hundred Schools. I am an ally and advocate of the LGBTQ community. I am here to speak about the canceled author visit. It is helpful that the original rationale, which was clearly dissembling, has been amended to include the actual reason of objecting to content about activists from the LGBTQ community. However, it's no less of DMG. Our district's stated mission is to support all students to reach their highest level of learning and personal development. We have a belief in providing a safe and secure environment for all students. I'm aware that our district has in various ways supported our LGBTQ students. However, the justifying and downplaying the decision to deny students the opportunity to hear a diverse voice is counter to this mission. What the administration probably viewed as an act of appeasement, of airing on the side of caution, was experienced as an act of exclusion and rejection by LGBTQ students, staff, and community members. There is a long, dark, and pervasive history of silencing the voices of LGBTQ people. Activist Harvey Milk was assassinated in order to silence his voice. The assassin felt he had a right to unchallenged beliefs and worldviews, and that this right superseded Harvey Milk's right to exist. Here, Robin Stevenson's voice was silenced. When a minority voice is silenced, the message to every person who shares that voice is, you're invisible, you don't belong, you don't matter. My daughter is a doctoral candidate in clinical psychology. She specializes in a therapeutic approach which treats people who have experienced trauma and a lack of personal validation resulting in persistent anxiety, depression, and suicidal tendencies. Her clients are predominantly people who identify as LGBTQ. Studies have shown that transgender youth experience suicidal tendencies at a rate of five times or more than cisgender youth. With the simple act of addressing transgender youth by names and pronouns which match their gender identity, there's a twenty-nine percent increased risk of suicidal behaviors. When a school acts in a way that excludes, that makes any child feel less than, feel invisible, the well-being of that child is threatened. The new Illinois law requires that history curriculum include recognition of the roles and contributions of LGBTQ people. There are residents of our community who feel that they have a right to unchallenged opinions and worldviews, which supersedes the right of diverse voices to be heard and acknowledged. As the district institutes this important curriculum change, I hope the existence of these few residents will not unduly influence the process. I hope that in all matters, we will choose inclusion over exclusion, validation over rejection, safety over threat. The lives and well-being of our students be literally to be protected. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Michelle Gorman.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Gorman. I'm a twenty-year resident of Wheaton. My four children attended Longfellow, Franklin, and Newton North. Besides being an extremely active volunteer while my children were students, I am also a former district employee. I'm here tonight to speak regarding the cancellation of Robin Stevenson's author visit. I emailed the district twice last week regarding this matter as to two of my daughters. I've had a phone conversation earlier this week with an assistant superintendent, and have commented several times on the district Facebook page. I feel so strongly regarding this matter and the manner in which it was handled, that I decided I needed to speak to you tonight in person. A week ago tonight, I read for the first time the open letter to our school district, which Ms. Stevenson signed. Words cannot express how shaken I was when I read her words. I went through a wide range of emotions. I was disappointed, upset, angry, disheartened. The district's actions cited by Ms. Stevenson in her open letter, were harmful not only to individuals who identify as LGBTQ. to individuals who identify as LGBTQ+, and their families, friends, neighbors, and supporters, but they were harmful to our entire community. These actions demonstrated that discrimination and the marginalization of individuals due to their sexual orientation or gender identity was acceptable. It is never acceptable. A few facts regarding the LGBTQ+ population. The population is five times more likely than their straight peers to attempt suicide. Thirty-five percent of the LGBTQ+ student population misses school because they do not feel safe. What could have been a wonderful event for these students to feel safe, important, and celebrated, was suddenly yanked away from them and their straight peers. Ms. Stevenson had not even planned on speaking about Harvey Milk or Janet Mock, two activists she so eloquently wrote about in her book. A week has passed. Many websites, both local and national, have carried this story. Much of the information is contradictory. Due to time constraints, I don't want to rehash all the contradictory information, but I do want to state that as of yesterday, Ms. Stevenson has stated that she has yet to receive an apology for the cancellation of her visit, or an attempt to reschedule her author visit. This is not acceptable. Ms. Stevenson has stated that she prefers to communicate via email. I hope the district will honor her request, encourage the district to reschedule the author visit to Longfellow as originally planned, and also offer an additional program in the evening for all District 200 students and families who would like to attend. It is clear the community wants this and needs this. I hope the district will implement strategies, curriculum, and programs beginning now at all district schools that educate students about the LGBTQ+ community, that celebrate the diversity, that celebrate diversity, and provide for the safety and inclusion of all individuals. Actions do speak louder than words. Thank you.
Okay, next is Laura Seymour.
I'm here to express my deep disappointment in the district's decision to cancel the author visit of the book, "Killed Activists." Your actions have sent a message, whether you have unintentional, to hundreds of LGBTQ students who walk the halls of District 200 every day. The message that they are not okay as they are, the message that they are expensive type. This is not just an opinion, but this is my family's experience. I'm not interested in the semantics of who you are and why. I'm not even interested in the semantic fault. Quite frankly, the public comments that have been made by District 200 have been disreguished and insulting. Take responsibility for your actions. Do all of your power to reiterate this message so that all children, all children, feel welcome and deserve value in your schools. Please be courageous and do your best.
Okay, next is, it's like Jackie Grove, Groby? It's Jack. Jack?
If you don't mind, I'd like to do the last. Is that you? Am I last?
You can do that, sure. Mary Louise Hen...
Henjisba.
Yeah.
It's the name I married into, I didn't choose it. I am Mary Louise Henjisba. I'm a Longfellow parent and a former professional speaker to students on sexuality issues. I am grateful for our school and for the school district's decision regarding the presentation by Robin Stevenson at Longfellow Elementary. I have friends who are LGBTQ. We must love everyone regardless of differences, but must follow universally accepted protocols that respect parents' rights. It was a difficult choice, but the right one. Years ago, I traveled the country speaking to students about sexuality issues. I spoke in public and private schools and began my work in the Milwaukee Public Schools and the Pittsburgh Public Schools with Best Friends Program. I went on to speak in public schools in major cities such as Washington DC and Philadelphia, as well as smaller cities and suburban and rural areas. I spoke to more than 150,000 students in more than 20 states. Sometimes, a school would have to cancel or reschedule my presentation at the last minute because the school didn't follow proper protocol for allowing parents to opt out their students in advance. However, I wouldn't write a letter berating the community as this author did. Instead, I followed standard practice of school speakers, working privately with the school to find a mutually agreeable date. If concerns were raised, my agent would set an outline of my presentation to the school in advance to review. I'd also do a phone call with the school if they had further questions or parameters. My presentations often received standing ovations. However, some students chose to opt out their children. Some had concerns that the latency period was not respected, their seventh grader was too young to carry a presentation on sexuality issues. My talks refer to junior high and high school students. No matter how valuable the message is, if a presentation touches on sexuality issues, the right to opt out must be provided. As professional speakers for schools know, flux happens, and nobody is entitled to speak to students. Speaking to students is always a privilege. I wasn't aware ahead of time that this author writes primarily on abortion and sexuality issues, and if I would, and I would have been uncomfortable if my children came home from such a presentation without being informed in advance. Under the US Constitution, the free exercise of religion is protected. People have the right to opt out of teachings that violate a core tenet of their faith. And, parents with beliefs across the religious and political spectrum want to know and have the opportunity to opt their children out of presentations that conflict with their sincerely held beliefs. For example, imagine a speaker presenting to students on adoption and telling the girls that if they become pregnant, they must carry the child to term regardless of the circumstances. Some parents might want to opt their children out of that presentation. This book was given to me by another Longfellow parent, and after reading it, I joined my concern with many parents who feel that much of the content isn't age-appropriate for nine-to-eleven year olds. I have a unique breadth of experience in this area and would like to offer myself as a resource to the district on these issues in the future. Thank you.
Okay, next is Jennifer Merk.
Mr. Paulson and members of the Board of Education, Dr. Schuler and members of the administration, I'm pleased to speak to you tonight on behalf of the Student Excellence Foundation. My name is Jennifer Merk. I'm a 34-year resident at Wheaton and a 17-year parent in the district. It was 17 years ago, just this past August, that I walked into this very gym and volunteered for the first time for a District 200 school, and I'm thrilled this year to be serving as a president of the Student Excellence Foundation. On December 10th, the foundation will celebrate 28 years of serving and supporting District 200 students. We're proud of that and we're glad for our partnership. As Brad mentioned, the foundation was pleased to host the fifth annual STEM Expo last Friday November 8th at Hubble. We welcomed almost 900 attendees to explore over 60 exhibits on the ever-expanding fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We also wanted to tell you about the Cantini Community Trees event that is coming up. Cantini Park in Moonfield hosts an annual event during mostly December at the McCormick Convention, and as part of their monthly holiday celebration, they give $2,500 donations to each of seven local not-for-profits. And each not-for-profit decorates a holiday tree and mansion with the opportunity to receive an additional $2,500 if the not-for-profit receives the most votes during the season. The Student Excellence Foundation is honored to have been asked to decorate one of the trees this year, and we'd like to invite the school board and the administration and the District 200 community to join the foundation by visiting the McCormick Convention between November 26th and December 29th. We would ask you to vote for the Student Excellence Foundation's tree in the hope that we will bring 2,500 additional dollars to support the District 200. And I wanted to mention that the $2,500 we've already received and the potential for the $5,000 is not a vote for the foundation as an organization, but it's really a vote for District 200 and for the students of the district. The foundation is grateful for our partnership with the school district administration and with the Board of Education, and we are honored to represent District 200 to the broader community through our participation in the Cantini Holiday Trees for the 2019 season. Thank you.
Okay, next is Rebecca Cinnamon Murphy. Did I get it right?
Yep, it's the bullish spelled with a spice. So, what a week it's been, huh? When we moved to Wheaton three years ago, it was a punchline in my community. You know, started out, "Oh, Wheaton, what a good saying." And we thought hard about it, we're a Jewish family, and, but it was a beautiful home. And I grew up in Rhode Island, and I knew different schools were wonderful, and I haven't regretted the decision. I still don't regret the decision. I think we've learned a lot this week. I think we learned that the punchline is kind of true. Hopefully, you've learned that the group that needs to be appeased in airing on the side of caution is maybe not the same group it's always been. I think Dr. Salagi has done an amazing job this week. He's called us personally, he's, Erica's been on the social media. I feel like the district has really engaged and made me feel valued as a community member and as a parent. We kept our focus in our conversations. He was very instrumental in keeping our conversation on, what is the goal of the school? And that's to prepare children to be citizens, right? To engage, and that diversity wins, right? That we are stronger when we are inclusive and diverse. And I think his presentation on children and violence and who hurts whom supports that very definitely. This is not an abstract topic for me. I mean, we can quote all sorts of statistics about queer kids, but I have a third grader and a first grader at Washington, and they've had great experiences. My son is gender not conforming. He uses he/his pronouns, he's four, but he wears girls clothes. So, parents can opt out of educational opportunities surrounding LGBTQIA issues, but they can't opt their kids out of interacting with my son. And if this is going to be a safe place for my kid, they have to learn what it is, and I'm sorry if that makes it a difficult conversation over the table that sometimes boys wear girls' clothes. I have no idea who he's going to love. I have no idea who he's going to partner with. It's not about sexuality, it's about gender, and that you can address at an age-appropriate level at every level. So, I love that we're going to talk about policy, that's my sweet spot. I have a degree in public policy, so yay, HR committee. But also, let's talk about curriculum, because there is an age-appropriate way to discuss gender expression, at least, in the elementary level, and that is different from sexuality. So, thank you very much.
Okay, next is, looks like G. Robert Alden. Can I get it close?
So, yeah, my name is Rob Alden. Great exchange, so it's been great, everyone's comments. Dr. Schuler, I did want to just commend you. I feel like you really handled things well this week and showed great leadership. Also appreciate Sean Walsh, and just how both of you handled a very difficult situation. I don't think that Ms. Stevenson should have been invited, and I do think it's appropriate that her visit was canceled. Her values are not aligned with my family's values, or in my opinion, the values of most people who attend Longfellow, or two of my children attend. I really feel strongly that parents should decide when their children learn, how when their children learn about difficult topics, including this one, so LGBTQ. Thank you very much.
Okay, and then finally, back to Jack Grove.
Thank you. I didn't want to repeat what others were saying, so I appreciate adjusting the agenda a little bit there. My name is Jack Grove. I've been in the district for way too many years, nearly 40. I have three children, educated, Longfellow, Hawthorne, Franklin, Newton North. I was a member of this Board of Education for seven years, served as its president and vice president. I first want to thank you for your service. It's still not a paid job. I don't care.
Next one.
But it is an incredibly dedicated job, and the best part of it is handing out those diplomas every spring at North and South. So, thank you for your service. Principal Moran, thank you for keeping us centered on what's most important, that's our children. I'm grateful that you're still having your meetings in the schools and not at parent. That's a good thing, because it keeps us focused on the right stuff. I'm particularly appreciative of the diversity that offered, that didn't exist when my children went here. It's good to see our district beliefs include respecting diversity and appreciating diversity. We did live up to those beliefs in the past two weeks. The, I'm very disappointed to have to learn again, that we have to learn again, to not be afraid of ideas and not be afraid of discussion of ideas. It's, we had to learn this in the past. There were groups in the past who tried to limit the ideas presented to our students, and the Board stood tall and made sure that that was not going to happen. Every parent has the right to choose that their student not be exposed to something if they find it objection. That's unfortunate, in my opinion, because I think students become true lifetime learners if they're exposed to every idea and the opportunity to discuss it. We cannot accept limiting ideas today. We haven't accepted it in the past, and we cannot accept it today. Others have spoken eloquently about LGBT issues. I think it's a broader question. So, you know, if you look at the book, on the cover of the book, I was glad that somebody brought a cover, there's a black guy that fought the administration, there's a white guy that was gay, there's a white guy that was a bastard born out of wet buck, there's a Muslim woman. So, if the school was supposed to tell parents everything, how would they pick what might be offensive to somebody? It's ridiculous to put that on the shoulders of our teachers and our librarians and our school principals to try to figure out which idea might be offensive to somebody in the community. It's the parents' responsibility. They were provided this picture. There's certainly an ample opportunity to understand if you're concerned about these issues, that you might want to look into this further. So, our staff put in a lot of effort to organize, to schedule, to bring this person in, recognize the person, supported by Anderson Books, which does hundreds of these over the decades. This was not a lightweight. This was somebody that knew what she was talking about. You have a problem. You have a community that's very concerned. You made me wait for three hours, you can wait for another minute, thanks. This issue has come up before in this community, and it's unique, I think, to this community, somewhat unique. And I think you need to make sure, you've mentioned with Superintendent Schuler that you need to learn from us, I think you need to include the community in those learnings. I don't think you should underestimate the importance of this issue to this community. Board, it's your responsibility to make sure that, as Superintendent Schuler indicated, that we learn from this. I don't want to see our staff spending their time reading every word in every book to try to figure out what might be offensive to somebody, and then have to publish that and send it out. Let's grow up. Let's recognize that the problem we have in our country today is we don't know how to communicate about difficult issues with each other. So, that's my statement. I would hope that the district is going to include the community in the conversation going forward and figure out how to learn from this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to all our community members for waiting through our agendas, and I appreciate your comments and your partnership in moving forward. So, for adjournment, I'd like to move that we adjourn a closed session for the purpose of discussing two things. One is security procedures, school building, safety and security, and the use of personnel equipment to respond to an actual threat or a reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, staff, students, or public or public property under 5 ILCS 120/2, subparagraph C, subparagraph 8. And, number two, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body. or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves and is an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, under 5 ILCS 120/2, subparagraph C, subparagraph 1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crabtree. Do a roll call, all right?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Bootman?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Max?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Just wanted to confirm, there's no action or even discussion expected following closed session.